All right, we will consider ourselves in order. It is six o'clock. Our invocation will be given by Councilmember Delane Seigerman. Following that, Brandon McDonald, who is one of our firefighters and not hearing me. Okay? Let's see. Let's work on sound again.
Testing.
Okay. While they do that, I will...
I think they're doing it. It sounds right.
...make myself heard. We are in session as a city council. You hearing me now? Okay. And the councilman, Councilmember Delane Seigerman, will give our invocation. Following that, Brandon McDonald will come to the podium here. He is one of our firefighters here and a marine veteran to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. Let's stand.
If you would pray with me, please. Dear God, just be with us tonight as we make decisions for the betterment of Kerrville and its citizens. Give us the wisdom to know how to vote and carry these decisions forward. Give us patience to listen to others' opinions and the discernment to know what's best for Kerrville. Thank you for our military, dear Lord, who put their lives on the line for us to keep our country free, which allows us for meetings such as this to take place all across the country. Thank you for the much-needed rain and help us to use it wisely. And thank you for the people in this room tonight who came to listen and be part of decisions which affect our future. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
All right.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, we will have announcements of community interest. And this is not a time to make remarks about an agenda item, but simply a community interest and events. And Stuart Cunys will share some of those with us.
Thank you, Mayor. We've only got a couple of them tonight. We're going to go through them pretty quickly. This is a very big weekend here in Kerrville. We've got the eighth annual Kerrville Triathlon this Saturday and Sunday. This is a huge event. These are some pictures from last year. As you can see, it attracts visitors from all over the state, all over the nation. And of course, it also has competitors here from Kerrville. And we invite everyone to come out this weekend, welcome these athletes. And please remember to be extra careful on the road. There will be a lot of runners and bicyclists in this event. And so we want to make sure we watch out for them, make sure they have a great time. There will be some temporary road closures with the event. If you'd like to know the times and where they are, they are listed on our city's website, on our Facebook page, or on Twitter. So this is a great event. Like I said, it's a lot of fun, so I encourage you to come out and see this. Also, this is one of my favorite events every year because it helps me clean out the house, the bulk collection. If you have any old big-ticket items around the house that you want to get rid of, and I mean, these aren't, these are items that don't go in your normal trash, they're kind of bigger than that, furniture, television, old mattresses and so forth. The next three weeks are the time to do it. And with the city's twice-a-year bulk waste collection begins October 1st, and you can see the collection dates up there. If you have a Monday day, then you need to have your items out on the curb by 7:30 a.m. on Monday, October 1st. If you have a Tuesday collection day, out on the curb by 7:30 a.m. on Monday, October 8th. And then Wednesday and Thursday collection days, it'll be on the 15th. If you need information on what items can be included in the bulk waste collection, again, you can visit the city's website, our Facebook page, or Twitter account. And I don't have a slide on it, but next Tuesday is National Night Out. It's a great time to meet our local police officers. They will be at various sites around the city, and we will have some information on that on our website by the end of the week. So encourage everybody to get out and see those officers.
Can I ask a question about the bulk waste collection? I've always wondered about this. So I'm a Monday collection day, so have it out by October 1st. How many days before I start to worry that they missed my house? Like, how many days does it take them to do this? Do we know?
They should pick it up that day.
I think it's the whole week.
Oh, is it?
So expect maybe the whole week before you worry. Okay. Okay.
Okay. Generally, I put mine, actually, when I put mine, pretty much gone, even before they get there.
Yeah.
What do you have?
Ms. Brown, City Secretary, would you read our consent agenda?
Yes, sir. Consent agenda is Items 3A, 3B, and 3C. 3A is Resolution Number 39-2018, approving the budget for Kerr Emergency 911 Network for fiscal year 2019. 3B is Resolution Number 40-2018, authorizing publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation for the purpose of financing waterworks and sewer system improvements for Legion Lift Station and the TTHM mitigation project. And then 3C is Resolution Number 36-2018, approving a negotiated settlement between the Atmos City Steering Committee, or ACSC, and Atmos Energy Corp., Mid-Tech Division, regarding the company's 2018 rate review mechanism filings, declaring existing rates to be unreasonable, adopting tariffs that reflect rate adjustments consistent with the negotiated settlement, finding the rates to be set by the attached settlement tariffs to be just and reasonable and in the public interest, approving and attached exhibit establishing a benchmark for pensions and retiree medical benefits, approving an attached exhibit regarding amortization of the regulatory liability, requiring the company to reimburse ACSC's reasonable rate-making expenses, determining that this resolution was passed in accordance with the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act, adopting a savings clause, declaring an effective date, and requiring delivery of this resolution to the company and the ACSC's legal counsel.
All right. Okay. Obviously, in a consent agenda, you try to deal with all of these together in one vote. And hopefully, questions have been asked in advance for clarity about any of these items. But a councilperson has the right to pull an item. So will we vote on this together, or is there anything to be pulled?
I would like to pull 3B, just for...
You want to pull 3B?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Then let's go to the other two items that are listed and deal with those. By the way, I do know, or it's just been pointed out to me, that I passed over the Visitors Citizens Forum. We will come back to that in just a moment after we deal with these items. Okay. So 3B is pulled out. We got 3A, 3C.
I'd make the motion that we pass 3A and 3C.
Okay. There's a motion from Mr. Rudy to pass A and C.
Second.
Second by Seigerman. Okay. Any discussion there? Okay. All in favor? Let it be known by the raised hand. And any opposed? No, he carries unanimously. Okay, let's go back to 3B.
Okay, so 3B is the, oh, you're going to present? Okay. That works.
So 3B is a resolution that authorizes the publication of our notice of intent to issue certificates of obligation. Is there a specific question that you wanted to ask?
Yeah. I mean, it was too full. At first, I didn't actually realize what we were doing when we did all this before. So this is a CO. And can you explain to the people what, why it's a CO, and we, you know, how that's working anyways?
Sure. And I'm going to put up the project and funding calendar that's also in your packet. So this is a process, and it's been going on for a while. So this is money that we will be borrowing from the Texas Water Development Board. It's for two different projects, the Legion Lift Station and the TTHM mitigation project. We started the application process back in March, and we've gone through many steps, and y'all have authorized several different things. Took most of the summer for the Texas Water Development Board to actually review the application. They've sent people out to interview, all that kind of stuff. We got news that we've been approved by the Texas Water Development Board. And then the way the funding mechanism actually works is these are certificates of obligation that are issued, but the Texas Water Development Board is the one who purchases the certificates of obligation.
So it's basically just a short-circuited CO because we already know they're going to buy them?
Yes. They are the sole purchaser. It's a direct purchase of those certificates of obligation by the Texas Water Development Board.
Mostly, I just wanted to clarify that because people saw CO and it kind of threw it off. But the other thing about what we got presented was, I guess, in the November 13th step, it's going to be ordinance authorizing issuance of debt. And we had talked about this when we refinanced, whatever we called that thing, the last Christmas or whenever it was.
Yes.
And we talked about how the city charter says, you know, when we do an ordinance, two readings, and it gets it done. State law says the second reading isn't necessary to make it be working. And when I asked that question back at Christmas, I got told, yeah, we can do it in two readings. And at Christmas, we understood it was an emergency of time schedule and whatnot. Is there any real-time constraint to doing two readings on the ordinance like we would normally do?
I know that our bond council recommends one reading, and that's why we're going with that. There is a little bit of constraints around these publications. Have to be 30 days in advance of when the ordinance is actually done.
Right.
So there's a little bit of time constraint there. We do want to get our interest rates locked in as soon as possible, just because we're in a period of rising interest rates. So we feel like the sooner we can lock them in, the better. And then, of course, we would like to do our closing by December so that we can start awarding bids and then get the construction started on both of these projects in January.
But according to your schedule, the Water Board's going to set the interest rate November 6th regardless of whether we get two readings or one, right?
They, yeah, they will set on the 6th, and then on the 13th, we need to have, pass the ordinance in order for us to close by December 6th.
Like I said, I just wanted to raise the issue because, you know, anyways, I don't need, we don't need to debate it here. Sorry. Thanks.
All right. Are you ready to vote on 3B? You give the motion?
I would move that we pass 3B as written.
Go to second.
I second.
Okay. We've got a motion, second. All in favor? Let it be known by the raised hands. Okay. Thank you. Okay. I'm going to go back to the Visitors Citizens Forum. Sorry I jumped over that. This is for any citizen with business not scheduled on the agenda. You may speak to the city council. Prior to speaking, each speaker must fill out the Speaker Request Form and give it to the City Secretary over here. City council may not discuss or take any action on an item, but may place the issue on a future agenda. The number of speakers will be limited to the first 10, and each speaker is limited to four minutes. All right. Do we have anyone to come to Citizens Forum?
We do. We have John Brown.
John Brown. Okay. Yeah.
My name's John Brown. I've lived in Kerrville for over seven years. I live on River Hill Boulevard.
Yeah, I'm sorry. What's the address?
205 River Hill Boulevard. River Hill Boulevard was built before 534, before Tybee High School moved to 534, and before GPS. Recently, on River Hill, I've seen a Pepsi and a FedEx 18-wheelers, 18-wheelers, on residential streets, some unknown tequila distributor, and an Oak Farm milk truck. I submit that backdoor milk deliveries by dairies ended when I was in elementary school. You know, the traffic on River Hill Boulevard has gotten so bad that the city had to put a stoplight in at River Hill and 173. The engine and tire noise is conversation stopping, and there's no shortage of crummy mufflers in Kerrville. And you cannot believe, when they turn on 16 and they go up the hill, and the engine is under a load, and they're pulling a trailer of cattle, sheep, pigs, dead cattle, it makes a lot of noise. Every week, it's whiskey bottles, beer cans, fast food trash with regularity. One morning, a very unappetizing used condom. I will make a wager that city council and the mayor have never found a used condom in their front yard. The random bouts were installed or no solution. They are nowhere in the traffic study that was done a few years ago, and they do nothing to slow traffic. The stop signs have been removed, the speed monitor's removed, and I haven't seen a police car on River Hill Boulevard in months. The speeding is just getting worse every day, and it's really worse on the weekends. You know, there's nothing to slow anybody down. There's no reason for them to slow down because they know they're not going to get a ticket. There's a maximum 7,000-pound signed ordinance, but I've been told that ordinance was never written. How long does it take to ride an ordinance? I mean, we could reduce the traffic on River Hill Boulevard immensely if you just adopted an ordinance that kept all the trucks and the trailers from driving on the street. River Hill Boulevard is used as a state highway, but the state's not paying for it, and repairs are at the cost of the city. And I wouldn't think you'd want to go on with that too much longer. And actually, I ask that, if requested, the city do no repairs on River Hill Boulevard because I want people's teeth to rattle when they're driving down the street, anything to slow down the traffic. You know, it's a sad state of affairs when you can't teach your grandson how to ride a bike because the traffic on the street is so bad. You know, 534 needs to be completed around the city into 16, but there doesn't look like there's much going on on that. And the city, for a long time, has resisted any efforts to improve the traffic situation on River Hill, and I don't understand that. I mean, we are property owners, and we deserve a residential street, not a state highway.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
The ordinance Number 2018-19. Did you read that?
Number 4A is ordinance Number 2018-19, designated, designating a contiguous geographic area within the city as a reinvestment zone pursuant to Chapter 311 of the Texas Tax Code to be known as reinvestment zone number one, City of Kerrville, describing the boundaries of the zone, creating a board of directors for the zone, establishing a tax increment fund for the zone, containing findings related to the creation of the zone, providing a date for the termination of the zone, providing that the zone take effect immediately upon passage of the ordinance, providing a severability clause, providing an effective date. This ordinance was approved on first reading on September 11th, 2018, with a vote of 3 to 1.
All right.
Mayor, am I to recuse myself of a conflict?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Focal recusing himself because of conflict of interest. The council has dealt with this over several months, actually going back into the winter of last year and Conference of Plan and public meetings and so forth. But at this time, I would like to ask the city manager to introduce this item, at which time he'll turn it over to a consultant that we work with.
Thank you, Mayor. So as you said, this dates back to winter of last year when I was having conversations with the council at that time, and the decision was made to move forward with at least a study and some recommendations relative to a downtown tax increment reinvestment zone. As a result of that study, it was decided to go ahead and move forward. The new council came on board after we had a public meeting at the Calo Center back in the spring, and you all wanted a workshop. So we kind of tapped the brakes a little bit. We had a workshop, more thorough discussion of what it all means, before we proceeded to put it back on the agenda. And since that time, you know, we've had lots of debate about this, as you said. So tonight is the second final reading for the creation. If you all take this action tonight, then in October, you'll have two readings of an ordinance to approve the project and financing plan. But before we get any further into the agenda item, we do have our consultant here, David Pettit, who's going to give a brief presentation, not covering as much as he did in the workshop or even your last meeting, to give an overview. And then I know that you'll want to take public comment. So, David?
Mayor, members of council, thank you so much for the opportunity to join you again. It is, I count it as my fifth time down here, and we have been discussing this for quite a while. And I will have a brief presentation for you and be available for any questions. My presentation is kind of related around why is downtown important? What is a TERZ? We've gone over that several times. Talking about prior briefings and activities, the proposed TERZ number-one boundaries and details, the participation net benefits participating in this, the legal restrictions of the TERZ, and then also the next steps. So this is something that has been asked several times, and I just thought it was bear mentioning. Why is downtown important? Downtown districts are prominent employment centers. Downtown district is a reflection of the community. Downtown represents a significant portion of the community's tax base. The traditional commercial district is an ideal location for independent businesses, which in turn keep profits in town with local owners, support other local businesses and services, support local families with family-owned businesses, supports local community projects, provides a stable economic foundation with direct ties to the community. Tried fitting this all in one slide, it would not go. There was 10 of them. Downtown is the historic core of the community. A vital downtown area reduces sprawl. A healthy downtown core protects property values and surrounding residential neighborhoods. The district is the government center, as evidenced by us here today. Downtown provides an important civic forum where members of the community can congregate, and downtown represents a huge public and private investment. So I wanted to take it one step further, and I have lots of research on why downtowns are important, but this is from the American Planning Association, the downtown revitalization in small and midtown cities. This comes from them. Downtowns are more than retail, commercial, service, and work centers. They are symbolic centers of cities and are unifying forces for the communities. These are the reasons cities across the country are committing resources, both financial and human, to bring back, bring them back to economic health. And this ties in with what y'all have worked very hard on, which is the Kerrville 2050 Plan. The guiding principles and the action items that would be required to achieve this vision include land use, economic development, housing, community neighborhood character and placemaking, mobility, transportation, wastewater, water drainage, public facilities and services, parks and open space in the Guadalupe River Corridor, downtown revitalization and implementation. I'm not going to read every one of these. There's eight, but there's an entire chapter on downtown revitalization. But I'm going to read one from each slide that I think is kind of reflective of the importance of downtown. Create a living room for the community and a front door for visitors, a full-service destination that attracts anchor users, and increase residential and mixed-use development. You look at the eight, which is one of the eight guiding principles. Encourage reinvestment in downtown in the form of vertical mixed-use development, including residential uses. So I won't bore you too much with what a TERZ is, but I think for the people in the audience, it's important. That a tax increment financing, TIF, is a tool that incentivizes economic development within a tax increment reinvestment zone. In my world, and it's soon to be your world, we will have, we use that interchangeable, TERZ and TIF. So we don't make a big distinction, but one is a financing tool and the other is a zone. It's governed by the Tax Code, Chapter 311. There's approximately 313 TERZs have been created in the state of Texas. As I had mentioned before, that's probably on the low end because not all cities that I've worked with report that. But the comptroller just publishes what they receive. So there's a number of cities that are delinquent in providing those. So cities alone or in partnership with other taxing units can use this tool to pay for improvements in the zone, so it will attract new development, facilitate investment, and bring excitement and energy to the designated area. Andrew just went past that. Taxing entities continue to contribute ad valorem taxes received from, or taxing entities contribute ad valorem taxes, real property, when we talk about ad valorem, from incremental increases in value on property within the TERZ. Those funds can be used to pay for cost of public works, public improvements, economic development programs, and other projects benefiting the zone. I think you've seen this before, but just to keep it interesting, I changed the colors. So I think, as I had mentioned before, if you can just imagine that what we are doing is if you took a line and drew a boundary around an area, you're saying that I'm comfortable with the current taxable value that I'm receiving from that area. And any increment that occurs through increase, and I'll talk about that here in a minute, goes into a special fund to be spent in that area. There are really, and I've mentioned this before, two ways to create increment, and there's no more than just two ways. New construction or and/or investment, and annual appreciation of real property. I like to call this organic growth, that your property tends to grow. My home state continues to grow. I know the legislature's working on limiting that, but it grows at an annual basis. So the key components to a TERZ, Chapter 311 outlines the various procedures, and there's two main documents. The creation ordinance, which we're considering tonight, and a project and financing plan. The creation ordinance establishes four key elements: the boundary, term, TIF board, and preliminary project and financing plan. If approved tonight, the TIF creates, upon the TIF creation, a final project and financing plan is approved by the TIF board and then comes back to city council for two separate readings. So there's two separate documents. So you're not the first to venture into the TERZ world. There are a number of different cities, large and small. These are cities that I pulled just from the state comptroller's office that have focused primarily just on their downtown areas. I've been involved in a number of these, and they have seen a significant amount of success in being a catalyst for new development. As I think Sidney M. Andrew mentioned, this, we've had previous activities, and this is my fifth time to come down and speak with you guys. my fifth time to come down and speak with you guys. We had the downtown stakeholders meeting on March 16th. We had a June 12 briefing. We also had a TERS workshop on August 21st. And two weeks ago, we had our public hearing and our first reading. Tonight, we are with our second reading. I want to tell you a little bit about the TERS and the boundary and the details. The goal of the TERS, number one, is to fund construction of needed public infrastructure and encourage private development that will yield additional tax revenue to all taxing jurisdictions. It includes approximately 477 acres located in the downtown Kerrville area. If created, the base would be 2018, the term would be 30 years, and we're proposing participation at 100%. We worked with staff to make the zone appropriate for targeted investment and the appropriate size. It's a real art to making a TIF. You don't want to make it too small. Cast your net too small, you don't catch anything, but a little bit larger. And so I think we met the right balance of size for the TERS to be able to capture potential increment. This is one of the harder things to do with a TERS, is do a projection. So my crystal ball about if we put this TERS in place, what will happen? What will happen over the next 30 years? I might add that this is just one page of the project plan. The project plan is 27 pages for your review, and it goes through all the requirements of the TERS creation and also the state statute. The TERS will promote creation of commercial development consisting of retail, office, hotel, as well as residential development. What I like to call this is a menu of project cost that the TIF board and city council can use and approve moving forward on actual project-level basis. What we have found is those that are too scripted, because we don't know what the future's going to hold, that we need the flexibility, and you're still going to have the TERS board and the city council make the final decision of how these funds are going to be spent, that we give you a menu of how to be able to spend those dollars, rather than a prescribed, you have to do this, because we know market conditions will change over the next 30 years. So this prevents us from having to come back and amend the plan, which is, what we have found is those that have been very restrictive and not had this menu, we still have the two, as I've mentioned before, mother mayices to the TIF boards and the city council, that this provides the best flexibility going forward. By creating the TERS, what we actually calculated was hotel occupancy tax, sales tax, real property, and business personal property taxes. With the city participating in 100% of its real property, net benefit would be $34 million. The next slide breaks down where those dollars go. Obviously, the other taxing jurisdictions benefit significantly, but if you look at majority of the revenue is coming from real property, sales and hotel occupancy tax. If you look at the slide to the bottom right, or the pie chart, you can see that $14 million out of that $30 million is new sales tax that's going to be generated downtown. This is an assumption, but I think based upon input that we have received from the staff and from the community, that there'd be $7 million going to the general fund, and 3.5 going into the Economic Development Corporation, and also $3.5 million going into Kerr County. So obviously, some benefits for doing the TERS, not only benefiting those properties within the TERS, but also the taxing jurisdictions that make up those within the city of Kerrville. There's been a number of questions that have come up regarding legal items, and so I felt appropriate to bring in an attorney to answer some of your questions. And I'd like to introduce Jim Plummer. Jim, if you'll please come. Jim is a partner with Bracewell. It was Bracewell Giuliani, and I've been corrected several times on conference calls that it's no longer Giuliani. He does his own gig. But so, but Jim is very well-respected and concentrates on taxes and financing, tax credits, government contracts for federal, state, and local levels, a substantial amount of work related to affordable housing, housing bonds. He has extensive public-private partnership, and that's what we're talking about here, and has negotiated several development management operating contracts involving governmental entities and contracts with tax exempt financing. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jim, and I'll also be available to answer any questions. So Jim, welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have been asked to specifically address a couple of questions. The first one is what role does eminent domain play in a TERS or TIF? For turning that around, does the creation of a TERS or TIF affect or enhance the ability to do eminent domain? And the conclusion that I have is that it does not in this case. And I want to point out that the state law says that specifically excludes the power of eminent domain to the TERS board. We also have drafted an ordinance to very carefully make sure that the creation of the TIF could not be used to bootstrap some argument about eminent domain. Eminent domain today essentially can be done two ways. It can be done by a city for a city project, owned by the city, it's got a public use, streets, sidewalks, et cetera, and there's a whole procedure kept following. The fear that I had come up with TERS several years ago was that you would use a TERS situation to take a piece of property from a current property owner, follow all the proper procedure, and then you got the property and you would turn around and give it to another developer. And that was the fear that has arisen from historic activities. All of that was based upon a finding that the TERS area contained blight. In order to do economic development, eminent domain, and that's a mouthful, you have to have a situation where there is a finding of blight. This ordinance has been drafted very carefully to make sure that we do not have a finding of blight within the TERS area. If you were to search this ordinance on your computer, you won't find the word blight. There are other alternatives that allow you to create a TERS other than a blighted area, and we are using those alternatives. And so we have been very careful to try and make sure that we don't inadvertently create something that could then be used in the future in an adverse way. And so this ordinance has been crafted very carefully. It does not contain the magic terms that would be able to be, say, well, you created a TERS, therefore you found blight, therefore there is blight in an eminent domain proceeding. I have actually proposed a couple of clarifications to this ordinance. They're not amendments. Ordinance is fine as it was originally drafted and read. But if you want to make it very clear that this ordinance cannot be used to bootstrap something associated with eminent domain, then you can add those provisions. They do not legally change the ordinance, but they do make it clear that there is no finding of blight. This TERS creation cannot be used as a basis for eminent domain. If there was to be an eminent domain, it has to come back to you, and you have to follow the procedure. And you will go through the whole process at that time. The TERS has no effect on that. You acting as a TERS board has no effect on that. And so we've tried to make it very clear, and tried to make it clear for the citizens, that the creation of this TERS does not affect, enhance, or otherwise deal with eminent domain. And in fact, we've prohibited it in the ordinance. The board does not have that power. The other question I've been asked to deal with is the role of land use. Ah, thank you. And when I say land use, I'm essentially talking about zoning. Can the TERS be used to change zoning? And the TERS board has no authority to initiate a zoning case. The zoning has to go through the normal city process that it would go through regardless of whether the TERS is there or not. And so I've also added a sentence to your ordinance to clarify that the TERS board has no ability to initiate a zoning case, has no ability to affect land use, has no ability to change the procedures associated with zoning or land use, and that any property within the zone that will be created must follow all of the code regulations, statutes of the city of Kerrville relating to zoning. So you can't shortcut what is in place. Now, once again, it's clarification. I believe that legally, that's already in place. But I think it's better for us to be clear on issues that come up, address them, and make it clear what we're doing and what we're not doing. And also to have your intent be clear when 20 years from now, and this thing is generating significant income, exactly what this council put in place, so that future councils don't have to answer questions. And also to keep some developers from trying to be too aggressive, quite frankly. And so I've suggested a couple of changes to the ordinance that I'd like you to consider. They're really clarifications, they're really not a legal change. You can adopt the ordinance as it was originally written, if you like. But I've tried to clarify a couple of things so that your desire is clear, and to make sure that there aren't any questions out there. And with that, those are really the two principal issues that I've been asked to address, and I'll be happy to either, if you want to turn it over to citizens or answer questions, whatever.
I think I've got a couple more slides.
Do you? Wow, this is just the taxing from his own.
Jim, please stay up here. What we did is the additional, you know, suspenders and bootstraps, is added some additional language to preliminary project and financing plan, saying that the TERS board is not authorized to use eminent domain. And also, we have some provisions in there about the provision for economic development. And I think Jim did a very good job. And so the creation ordinance is really kind of governing ordinance. And so, like you said, the language that's there now is fine, but the additions just clarify and make it much simpler to understand, instead of leaving any vagaries that might be out there. So with that, if we approve this tonight after taking comment and answering questions, there would be a project and financing plan that the TIF board would consider and then recommend to the city council for two readings. So we're happy to answer your questions at this time.
Let's do this. I think we have a number of people who want to speak to this, and then questions from those individuals will direct to you, or if possible, the city manager.
Before he gets off, can I make just one short clarification? First off, the people in the audience don't have this modified version, and I don't know if there's a way for us to get it on the screen or in their hands, but basically, what you're saying is the modifications that we just received a couple hours ago do not have any legal binding effect. They're just clarification, correct?
I believe that the way that the ordinance was drafted already included these provisions.
That's what I meant.
And so it's not a modification, it's a clarification. What it's really doing is it is stating the legal conclusion that was already in effect in language that I think people who do this kind of stuff can understand, so that there's just no doubt about it. I think you could legally parse through the sections and have come to the same conclusion, but I think you want to be clear.
Right, so to be clear, it doesn't add any force to the ordinance. You're just, you're saying these words are adding clarification, right?
I think they are. I think the legal conclusion would be the same.
That's what I meant.
Hey, let's, do we have speakers?
Don Vogel?
I made a copy for y'all. I didn't know y'all were going to be here.
Thank you, Don.
I think you've seen this.
Yeah, a couple times.
My name's Don Vogel. I live at 438 Carnal Drive, but I have a business right across from the parking garage, that's right in the heart of this TERS zone. And I've spoken with Delane, I haven't spoken individually with anyone, oh, well, George I've spoken with. But I, and I think I represent other people in the zone with concerns, and I hear what this man's saying and what David's saying, and I understand that. And, I mean, you can put a tuxedo on a goat, but it's still a goat. I have problems with some of this law. And this is from the 311, and it said a municipality can exercise any power necessary, including to acquire property by purchase, condemnation, or other means. Didn't say eminent domain, but it said condemnation, which is, I think, pretty close. And they can acquire blighted, deteriorating, underdeveloped, or inappropriately developed property. And I personally have a problem with that. It's in the law, and if y'all, and the last time I think, Delane and Bill, y'all have said, well, that's not what we intend to do. And I love that, I think that's a good idea, but y'all aren't going to be here for 30 years. There could, if we can even change the language, any council could change it. Once it's in effect, those are the things that can happen. And I have a copy of a lawsuit from Hardwick to the city of Lubbock, where this man had a piece of property, had a fourplex on it, that was going to be his income for, I don't know how long, I don't know how old he was, but if he's my age, it wasn't going to be too long. But he had a developer come to him and try to buy his property, and they, the negotiations fell down. So he goes to the city of Lubbock, and they take it. And part of the language in there said it was, quote, "unproductive, underdeveloped, or blighted." It doesn't have to be blighted. I think he said we took blighted out. Well, great. But there's a lot of language in this law that allows a city council, not necessarily just y'all, the ability to acquire property. I mean, I don't see how anyone can refute that. And a lawsuit has happened in Lubbock where a guy lost his property because of the TERS. It was in a TERS, and he ended up losing his property. Well, and like I told y'all before, we've been here almost 50 years on the corner. We'd like to be there for one of the 50. But I see this as an issue that if some big developer came into some council, not necessarily y'all, and had some plans for my building, I could be Mr. Hardwick. I could be out. And so, and one other aspect of it, and I've seen this in the paper, I think, Bill, you had an article, and Bruce Strake had an article, and the guy from the chamber had an article saying, oh, eminent domain is not possible, not legal. Well, that's not the whole truth and nothing but the truth, I don't think. And I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not trying to be a lawyer, but I am an owner who is affected by this action that y'all are trying to take. And the fact that they can use condemnation is not necessarily eminent domain, I think they're, I think they mean the same thing. If you get shot with a gun or you get killed with a knife, you're still dead. So it doesn't matter what, you know, you can call it what you want. But I think that aspect is there, and I don't know how you can make an ordinance that protects everybody from now on. And in 477 acres, there's a lot of somebodies. There's a lot of people that may think the same way. Y'all were at the meeting, at the town hall meeting, and I don't think there was anybody there jumping up saying, let's do this today. So there are people with concerns. And I didn't hear about it, never got a letter. I mean, I'm right across from the city hall, never got a letter. I didn't know about the meeting at the Calhoun Theater where everybody was trumping in this. And if you had a poor turnout, it's because nobody knew. And if we saw how many people were upset at the town hall meeting, you'd know that the, you know, people are not happy with it. So I know y'all are happy with it, and I know that nothing I'm saying today is probably going to change y'all's vote, but I just want to go on record of saying this is not the best thing I think for the city. And he had that graph where all the taxes were going up at the little level line. Well, if we're losing general fund taxes, possibly the rest of the city may have to pay the extra tax for overburdening the general fund. If they have to pay the tax, they ought to have a vote. I think it should go to a referendum and let the city decide if they want this or not. So that's all, that's all I want to say.
All right. Okay, do we have another speaker?
Yes, sir. John Miller?
John Miller?
My name is John Miller. I live at 245 High Ridge in Kerrville, Texas. I also am an owner of property that would be within this TIRS. I also participated in the workshop that was held back in February. And from what I understand about this, and have read about it, I certainly do not see any negatives that the city cannot overcome. And I applaud our mayor and city council members for bringing this forward, and also our city staff. And I urge you to vote yes for this tonight.
Before you sit down, can I ask you a question?
No, not yet. We'll come back.
Gary Cooper?
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on this issue. It's really very important. I've written what I want to say, because I'm going to try to keep it in four minutes, which may be difficult. Cheryl's already got the button going over there. I first would like to comment about the...
We'll give you a little more time for this. Give us name and address.
Oh, sorry. Gary Cooper, 124 Aaron Drive, Kerrville, Texas. My wife and I reside there, have for a number of years. The, I would take issue with the right of condemnation as well. There is Texas case law that holds that a development within a TIRS is deemed to be a public use or purpose. And while the TIRS board does not have the right to condemn or take property by eminent domain, the city certainly does. The city currently has the authority and effective tools to promote, develop, or incentivize development throughout Kerrville. However, a TIRS provides other and enhanced authorities and tools to use within the TIRS. These are, one, the power to take property by eminent domain or condemnation for either public or private development; two, the power to issue bonds or notes without voter approval to be repaid by the incremental increase in abhorrent taxes; and three, the power to establish a changeable project plan that controls and specifies property uses, areas, and development standards which could change existing uses or zoning designations. Generally, a city cannot exercise the power of eminent domain or condemnation except to take public, or property for public use or purpose. But as I stated, there is Texas case law that provides that a development that advances the purposes of the TIRS is considered to be public use or purpose. Therefore, and contrary to what you may have read in the newspaper, it is my opinion that the city will have the power to take TIRS property for public or private purposes. Doesn't mean they will, but they'll have the power to do it. There will be TIRS-specific costs and expenses incurred for acquisition and litigation related to the taking of property by eminent domain or condemnation, for incentives granted to encourage specific development and for infrastructure. The incremental tax revenue from the TIRS will not, for a long time, support a bond issue that will pay these TIRS-specific matters. The city will likely have to guarantee any initial bond issue, or use other city revenue sources to pay these TIRS costs and expenses. Remember, these bonds can be issued without voter approval. Broad discretion is also given to the TIRS board to decide when, for what amount, and to whom incentives will be granted. Broad discretion could potentially lead to wasting taxpayer money, or serving private rather than public interests. The TIRS board must act prudently and diligently when determining whether a development would not have happened but for the granting of an incentive. The argument has been presented that these incentives would come from free money, because the tax increment dedicated to the TIRS would not have been available to the city but for the development. However, the incremental tax dedicated to the TIRS is not free. It comes from general revenue funds that would otherwise have been available to pay for police, firefighters, schools, parks, and other city services. Increased property taxes will be needed to maintain the amount and quality of city services, as well as the quality of life public areas. Even though the use of a TIRS was briefly...
Mmm. Four minutes. You have rapid, I can read it. Korea.
Okay. Even though the use of a TIRS was briefly presented in the 2050 Comprehensive Plan, the negative aspects or pitfalls of a TIRS were not presented or generally known by the public. And I've gone through those powers, I won't do that again. Perhaps a development approach or method designed to promote and encourage a viable, walkable downtown that includes property on both sides of the Guadalupe River would be more acceptable. This proposed TIRS, as designed, does not serve or advance a broader public benefit or interest, and I am opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Next speaker.
David Jackson?
Evening. David Jackson, 516 Sandman, Kerrville. I'm here on behalf of the Calhoun Foundation to support this proposition and this effort, which we applaud, to foster and implement development. And I think it's a great idea. I understand the concerns, but I have confidence in this council and future councils to properly implement what's already been suggested would be the methodology to improve development. I've always been in favor of all of these tools, and it's wonderful to see the city adopt another tool that can help move the city forward and provide the support for development that we all like. Also reminded that Judge Tenley would tell you this evening, if he were here, to please proceed and offer the many benefits that we could have in this city with this kind of development. Thank you.
All right.
I'd like to ask him a question too later, wouldn't you let me?
Council Stephen King, 242 Creekwood. I live in the county, but I own three properties in the TIRS, and then an interest in the River Trail Cottage project on the east end. I have some concerns about the condemnation issue, but I'm going to have to read up on that a little more as far, that was brought up today, I'm not quite studied on that. My biggest concern is the board that's been presented. I think that a five-member board with five council members, or four council members and a mayor, is a very short-sighted board because of the turnover in council. I brought up to the mayor earlier, this was proposed two years ago, it probably would have thrown in the wastebasket and never passed. Now it's, you know, it looks like it has great support. So I went and looked at, there's 313 TIRS. I looked, I've been looking as fast as I can on my iPad about the boards of different TIRS. I haven't found one that, one yet, that is made up of a council only. I've come across, I've gone up to 10 right now, and they're all made up of some council members, most with no council members, but all of them have stakeholders or landowners in the board. And, I mean, you can go down from Leander, South Lakes, San Angelo, Pearland, Missouri City, Kennedale, Marble Falls, Plumma, Flower Mount, Jersey City, Jersey Village. Halton City has three council members, two other, but the rest of them have very, very diverse boards. And I feel like that's something that you almost have to add. If you don't have stakeholders on this board, the turnover of council is going to be, has been fairly active over the last few years, and I just feel like that you're going to end up with a mixed bag from year to year, or from two years to two years. So I, while I think I will, I am going to support it as far as the properties I own, I would not support a board made up of only council members, just due to, I think your consultant probably could help you with that, but just in a 10-minute period, I came up with 10 cities that do not conform with your board. Anyway, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. Okay.
Good feedback. Walt Koenig?
Good evening, everyone. I really, I appreciate the well-thought-out arguments I'm hearing tonight. It's one of the great things about our city. And I'm going to read a short statement on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. My name's Walt Koenig, by the way. 1343 Vandera Highway, Kerrville, Texas. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. The recently completed and ratified Kerrville 2050 Comprehensive Plan clearly identifies the need and desire for a vital downtown area, and defines the revitalization of our downtown as a priority. This priority is sensible, given the fact that the prosperous cities invariably have successful downtown areas. This priority also represents the will of the community, as expressed in our recently completed comprehensive plan. Revitalizing our downtown has historically been an elusive and inconsistent process over the years. Since arriving in Kerrville, I've consistently heard complaints that there's been much talk about making the downtown better over many years, but little tangible action. In my short tenure here, I have seen some evidence of measured investment in existing businesses. I've also seen the number of empty buildings reduced to some degree. But I've also seen, while these improvements are encouraging, there have been both successes and failures, and we've seen some progress, and we've seen some pullback, and we continue to see that on a regular basis. Simply said, the rate, pace, and sustainability of change that we've been seeing here is really less than what many would like to see. Breakthrough progress in the downtown area is possible, I believe, but to accomplish this needs some new thinking and some new tools. We can begin to move forward toward the fulfillment of both through the implementation of this new program, the TIRS, or the Tax Incremental Investment Zone. There's been ample discussion on what the TIRS is, how it works, and so I'm not going to rehash any of that here. There seems to be some solid positions on both sides, which are fairly opposed, and I hope, you know, we can come to a good conclusion that we can all be happy with. The Chamber applauds the efforts of the city to bring the innovation and new thinking required to move talk into action. We view the development and growth of the downtown area as critical to the success of our city, and we appreciate the successful vote from the city council for the first reading. We do ultimately encourage the ultimate approval to establish a TIRS in Kerrville's downtown tonight. And once again, I really appreciate the fact that everyone has really put a lot into this. The concerns expressed by the business owners are of concern also to the Chamber of Commerce, and we want to see everybody come together in a unified way to make this happen in a good way for everyone. So thanks again for tonight.
Thank you. Kevin Kurz?
Mayor, Council. I own some property in the TIRS. I live at 420 Mac Hollin, which is outside, that I understand. I don't question your desires in trying to make Kerrville a better place. Okay, I want to make sure you understand that. I don't believe this is the best way to take care of it. I was unaware of the ordinance, so I haven't been involved with it at all until I heard about a meeting at Buzz's, a barbecue, and I went there. One of the things I learned at that meeting is there's, my understanding, is there's no plan. We're just getting an ordinance. It's like opening a door. We don't know what's behind the door. And as citizens in Kerrville, we're opening the door, we don't know what's there. Also, I've heard people up here already talk about, "This has been done other places," and they've had success. Okay, how can you know there's success if you've not allowed the free market to take care of it? Because things have come in, ordinances like this, and changed what's going on. There's nothing to compare to. I don't understand that. It seems to me, from what I'm hearing, there's a lot of guessing about what could happen, and a lot of assumptions. And I'm very wary of government when it comes to things like this. As I think Ronald Reagan said nine words, that he said was nine most terrifying words. "I'm from the government, and I'm here to help." There can be unintended consequences, and without having, even being able to see a plan, I think it would be most prudent not to have an ordinance like this. It reminds me of the UDC, which Kerrville went through a few years back, and citizens did not want it. Ultimately, I think we need, it would be best if we left, left it to the free market to handle it. With the state and national economy getting stronger, I believe what we can look forward to increased growth and investment in Kerrville, resulting in the more tax revenue without an ordinance and without more bureaucracy. With this in mind, I believe we should allow the free market to drive that growth. So unless I could, I don't think there's any way to change my mind on that. I don't see a good thing about this. So I'd ask you to not pass the ordinance.
Tim Summerlin?
Good evening. Tim Summerlin, 105 Turnberry Circle here in Kerrville. Having retired, I've had a little more opportunity to do something I've enjoyed a great deal, which is walking the Riverwalk. And on these late summer days, I found myself very excited as I have walked along that, recognizing the beauty of something that was an investment with faith in the future of this community, and an example of the community coming together. I remember when I was at Shrinan University, that when we made some major landscaping changes, one of the things we did was to say, "We want our walkways to resemble the rivers around here. We want the campus to remind people of this hill country." It's a sort of symbolic way of expressing our sense of being very involved in this community. Now, of course, there are a lot of other ways that we were trying, and the university continues to say, "We must be a productive part of this community." But now that I am retired, one of those ways is the Symphony of the Hills. And the Symphony of the Hills is an entity that also expresses parts of the community coming together in productive fashion. The music that is provided through that symphony is provided in the Calhoun Performing Arts Center, and itself, a public-private partnership. I think we're best when we are together, working for a common good. Nothing illustrates that better than our 2050 Comprehensive Plan. A lot of planning, a lot of thought, a lot of care going into it. And it strikes me that the TIRZ is an important way of actualizing what was discussed there in more theoretical ways, or at least in a planning fashion. The tiers, as I understand it, is a tested means of directing tax funds for economic, specific economic goals. It's a signal to external investors of the city's commitment to planned development, and it creates the kind of conditions that permit specific opportunities to be pursued. We talk, we think, we plan, but we need to act, and this is a great way to act. It takes a little faith to move forward into the future. But then it takes a little faith to get up out of bed some mornings, and most of the time, we find it rewarding to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll tell you, we want to hear the speakers, and then we'll go to council. But I would like to do this, and that is, Mr. Plummer and Mr. Pettit, if you could address some of the questions that have been raised, and then we'll go back to speakers, because if you're like me and sitting back there and trying to stay up with all of this, it might be a little difficult. So... So you decide who to go first.
Thank you. As the closest thing to a goat in a tuxedo, I'll go first. I want to, I want to address a couple of things. First, the Lubbock case that was mentioned was a 2009 case. Legislature essentially fixed the bad problem that occurred in Lubbock in 2011. The legislature did so by saying that there cannot be a condemnation except for a public use, and you cannot do a condemnation where you give the property ultimately to a third party unless it is to cure urban blight. And that's the reason we've been so careful to stay away from the blight concept. The city has condemnation power. That will not change whether you adopt this TIRS or you don't adopt this TIRS. And the city has the ability to go and condemn. They have a procedure they follow, and they can do it. But the TIRS doesn't change what the city can and can't do, and I can understand the uneasiness about the potential for a city condemnation. But what you're considering tonight does not change that, and that's the real issue for us. The other thing I want to be careful about is that a TIRS does create a public purpose. Very important to say, "public purpose," it does not create a public use. Many of the discussions about eminent domain will address public purpose and public use. If they address public purpose and public use, it's probably old before the legislature changed. It happened. Now, there has to be a public use, and that's really important because it keeps the things from happening where a developer comes in, the city condemns all of the land, and just gives it to a developer. And I think that is now prohibited by the legislature. It does not prohibit the city from come in and saying, "Pick a municipal building. I'm going to condemn your land. I'm going to take the municipal building. I'm going to use it for my purpose." Whether the TIRS happens or doesn't happen, the city has that power, and this just doesn't change that. And in that fact pattern, you simply have to rely on your city to do the right thing. And so what you're considering tonight doesn't really change that whatsoever. There is language in the TIRS statute, and the man is reading you the right language. I mean, the TIRS statute does say, "The city has the ability to condemn, et cetera, for these public purposes." But that language was put in place prior to the 2011 legislation that addressed the procedure you have to follow, the findings you have to have. And so even though that language is in the TIRS statute, you would still have to go back to the condemnation statutes to conduct a condemnation. And so while the language is broad in the TIRS statute, you've still got to follow procedure. It's like everything else you do as a city and the legislature does. They may give you the power to do it, but you've got to follow the legislative requirements in order to do it. You have the power to issue bonds, but you can't do it except in certain fact patterns. You can't do, your notice of intent tonight is a legal requirement of issuing those bonds. And the TIRS doesn't change what those legal requirements are. So that's the reason that I've answered the question of, "Does what we're doing tonight adversely or impact the ability to do eminent domain?" No, it does not, because you still have to go through the center.
All right. Thank you. Hold on. I've got to ask him the question because he's going to leave without getting the question asked. So, so a few things, basically what you were talking about was the issue of public use, public purpose, the language. Is it, and I understand the law is subsequent to the Kelo case, but the Kelo case basically defined those as essentially interchangeable. Now, so then, the laws that we've got on the books in Texas to try and address that problem still left the fact that the TIRS, any implementation of the project plan in the TIRS is defined as a public purpose.
Correct.
Okay. So it becomes implementing that plan is actually the primary purpose for whatever you do in it. And 31108(c) also states that implementing the plan, acquiring the property, takes precedent over any law or municipal charter to the contrary. So how does that get reconciled?
I think that the subsequent passage of 2206 by the legislature would have to be taken into account in any condemnation proceeding that you have. The legislature's got two laws, which, while they don't directly conflict, one's very broad and says you can go do all of this, and then the legislature subsequently came back and said, "No, you have to do these things to do those things." And so I think a court would take the position that, yes, maybe they, they could have the power of eminent domain, although we've taken that out of the authorizing ordinance, but they could have had the power of eminent domain, but they still have to meet the procedural requirements under 2206. And when you go to 2206, you have, if you're condemning for something other than a pure municipal use of street, aside, et cetera, if you want to condemn to do economic development, you'll have to have a finding that there is a lessening of blight, which means there's got to be blight found.
Right.
And we aren't finding that here.
And the courts have been backing up the finding in a TIRS as being that in 1, 2, or 3 of the 31105.
We may come back to that. I'd like for Mr. Pettit to address.
It's what most of these people are here to hear about.
Yeah, okay. Okay, Mr. Pettit?
To follow up on what Mr. Plummer was just mentioning, the Lubbock case that was there did, there was some outliers that took advantage of those, and the legislature in 2011 fixed those. I can just tell you from my 25 years of experience, I've never gone through a project to where there has been, I mean, it's, it's a four-letter word to use, eminent domain for economic development purposes. And I don't know, Mr. Plummer, to back me up on this, I don't know of any situation to where there has been, since the 2011 changes in the state legislature, to where there has been economic development, condemnation for economic development purposes. When that was put in, there was two carve-outs that were already underway. One was what I like to call Jerry World, the Cowboy Stadium, and the Trinity River Vision in Fort Worth, Texas, which was a flood control and economic development. Those were the only two exceptions that the legislature gave. Since then, I cannot think of, and I don't think there's any case law out there, to where eminent domain has been used for economic development purposes.
Okay, all right. Okay, we have another speaker.
My name is Jerry Coons. I'm at 824 Water Street. I'm speaking in support of the TIRS this evening. I recently took a road trip through West Texas, and we saw many, many sad little towns, small towns, beautiful architecture, all boarded up, trash in the streets, dust on the road, very sad. And then we saw some towns with great downtowns, thriving and beautiful, and the surrounding areas alive and pleasant. So I'm not native to Kerrville, but over the last dozen years, I have brought my energy and treasure to this beautiful city because I see the potential that is here. And I encourage you to make a plan and take some action so that we can all enjoy the benefits of what we've been given. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Beth McLaughlin. I live outside the, I live 1429 Highway 39. I own property on Earl Garrett. I am here for the TIRS. I came here about 10 years ago and saw this beautiful opportunity of a downtown. And it would be great if free market could take care of everything, but as we've seen in this downtown, it hasn't. The fortunate, I mean, this town is so fortunate for so many reasons. One is the public-private partnerships that we've had and the private foundation and foundations that put in so much money in this town. I mean, we wouldn't be in this building right now if it wasn't for that private-public relationship. And I've, I started as a partner in Shriner Goods, and fortunately, we were able to get that business going because of the great revitalization renovation that the Calhoun Foundation did to the old Mercantile Building, a beautiful, beautiful renovation. We were, we were given very favorable rent in order to establish a business in downtown. I've been involved in a couple other businesses downtown, and it's hard. I mean, it's a beautiful area with so much potential, and without some public assistance, oh, that's probably not the right word, but support and a plan and an action and get rid of this fear-based mentality that somebody's going to steal your land, I mean, let's, let's be forward-thinking and make a move. And let's, let's have a downtown in a, a community that we're proud of, and, I mean, let's have faith in our leaders. They're not going to, I mean, they're not going to take your land. So let's just move forward and have a vital downtown in the surrounding area. Thank you.
Sylvia Fritz Dobbs?
Thanks, and I would, I would say that that was probably the right word that he used. It was the right word when she spoke.
Kim Ort?
Hi, my name is Kim Ort. I live on 222 Galvrich. I hope that's the right word to say. I'm not a Crevelian, so don't one have told me how to say that word yet. But anyway, I hear, I'm here to represent Kerr Arts and Cultural Center. We are the building that's like at the corner of Earl Garrett and, and Main Street. So we're part of the downtown area. I just want to address to you guys that the downtown area is a reflection of the community. It's a reflection of Kerrville, and it reflects our image, the pride in our community, and basically, it means what is our town identity. Okay? So I support the revitalization of downtown, and I support it because it's also a great location for the smaller independent business. And they in turn support the projects, you know, for the community, part of Kerr Arts and Cultural Center. So that's my Kerr Arts and Cultural Center support. The Unwristed Hat, and I'm homeowner here as well. And so I came from the Dripping Spring area from last year, so I do know Dripping Spring really well. And Dripping Spring, in the last five years, have a really cool downtown, and so I want Kerrville to have a really cool downtown. Yes, I know, I come from Austin, weird person, but I want my friends to be able to come out here, to enjoy Kerrville. Right now, they're like, "Yo, you got to come back because there's nothing to do out there." I'm like, "No, I want you to come out here," because I want them to be able to come out here, to go to a wine bar, to have some blues music or something, something for us to do here so that we don't have to go to San Antonio and go to, back to Dripping. So, so as a homeowner, I support this as well because it's a win-win for Kerrville and for the people that live here. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm not here to discuss the benefits or drawback of TIRS itself, but to voice my disappointment that the council is considering this ordinance as written. The ordinance is based on a falsehood. In the Texas Tax Code 311.005, it sets out the criteria that must, and that's must, be met for an area to be designated as a reinvestment zone. This ordinance that is being considered claims that the area within the TIRS zone is, quote, "predominantly open or undeveloped." Now, everyone saw the map that was shown earlier up on the screen. I believe that any reasonable person looking at that map would not be able to think that it was primarily, predominantly open or undeveloped. The so-called experts and consultants may think that the council will be willing to turn a blind eye to this fact of the ordinance, but their opinions do not change facts. Someone's opinion doesn't change what's actually in that mapped area. Now evidently, the council or city staff realized they had a problem after the first reading on September 11th, for that has now been changed. The criteria that they are using is now kind of a combination of two things. Now, I know earlier, one of the consultants mentioned that some things had been changed. I'm not sure if I even have the most recent one that was given to me off the website. Were any changes made within the last 48 hours?
Yes.
Okay, so the ordinance, as read on the 11th, no one has seen it that's probably sitting back here?
There's a couple, yeah, there's a couple of words that got changed. According to the consultant, he added some clarification that apparently has no bearing, but a couple of words were changed.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, it appears that some of the wording needed to be changed because they knew there had an issue. You cannot claim that an area that is built on, where businesses and residences exist to the degree that that map shows, is predominantly open and undeveloped. That is a falsehood. The Texas Tax Code outlines these restrictions for a very good reason. It is to protect the citizens from overly aggressive government. TIRS zones increase the power of the city council with no citizen vote. And I'm not saying that's a good or a bad thing, it's just a fact. So the Texas Tax Code says, "We're going to set up some criteria by which you must meet these things before you can form a TIRS zone." For our city council to ignore the Texas Tax Code and enact this ordinance when it is based on a falsehood is an attack on every citizen in Kerrville. It's not too late to reassess this ordinance and to make the changes necessary to be compliant with Texas law. Every vote for this ordinance will send a clear message to Kerrville that you have no regard for the rule of law. If you would adopt an ordinance based on falsehoods, how are we to trust what you say about how it will be used in the future? I'm asking you to no.
Good evening. I'm Lucy Pearson. I live at 1050 Blue Bonnet Drive, and I actually own a couple of businesses downtown. This is very spur of the moment for me. This is very spur-of-the-moment for me. I was speaking with my minister several weeks ago, and he just moved here and knew that I was born and raised here since 54. And he said, what was it that I liked most about Kerrville that I remembered? So I, two hours later, went through many of my childhood memories. And as I went home, I thought probably seventy-five percent of those memories happened right downtown. You know, ice cream at Pam Pells, the two gentlemen that always stood outside the Louise Dress Store, The Vogue, Shriner's Department Store, Mr. Swayze with his photograph studio where we all took our high school pictures, The Main Bookstore, Lehman's, the hospital was here, J.C. Penney. Downtown was everything for us, and it was where we all went. In-town football games, the band and the cheerleaders and Aunt Lorettes, we had a pep rally down here and everybody came. So when I decided to open a business downtown, or in Kerrville, downtown was my only option. I never considered anywhere else, because like Jerry says, there's too many downtowns that the tumbleweeds are rolling and the windows are boarded up. And it made me very, very sad to see my community and my downtown becoming that. Businesses have come and they've gone. So I chose to put my personal investment in downtown Kerrville, as other business owners have. I feel like that we do need support. I'm delighted that I've had council members come in on more than one occasion to both my businesses, just to see what it's all about, meet me, you know, get my opinion. I'm delighted that there's interest in downtown Kerrville. Again, finally, my three children and their husbands have all grown up in Kerrville, and now my eight grandchildren are growing up in Kerrville. And when they are sixty-four years old and looking back on their fond childhood memories, I want it to be downtown. So I'm asking the support for downtown. I want to see it come back. Thank you.
Karen Maddox. Bruce Kraft.
James. Evening, everyone. I'm James Bruce Kraft. And depending on your age, you'll know me as Bruce, but other than that, if you're younger, you're gonna know me as James. Depends on which one. Ms. Beal is certainly a hard act to follow, I can tell you, 'cause she spoke to just about everything that I wanted to speak to. But I'll go ahead and go with what I have. I can't say that I know that I'm in favor or against the TERS. I don't know whether it's gonna be good or bad for the city. I think that's something that only time's gonna play out, and we would see. But I do know that I see some primary issues with it that bother me. One is that the city council is being appointed as the board for that particular project. And I agree with some of the other ones that have spoken that that should be folks other than the city government, should be stakeholders, perhaps of other citizens. The other is that the city really has not given good education to the public, I don't believe, in getting information out there, either via newspapers, from the articles from the city, ads from the city, dispersments via city billings, anything like that. So I think the education of the public is a problem in trying to overcome some of the issues that you have here. And I think there need to be more about that. The other one that I have is, goes along with reasoning Ms. Beal says, and she stated very adequately some of the laws, and I'm pretty simple about it. I looked into the preliminary project plan, and it states, "Without the implementation of the TERS, a specific property would impair the sound growth of the municipality." Quite honestly, that statement, for me, is pretty vague, subjective, and I'm not sure that it can be proven. And so I don't think that could be used to justify, you know, creating a TERS or a tiers, however you wanna say it, district. I know it's been entered in as several items into the comprehensive plan, the 2050 Comprehensive Plan. But just because we have something in a plan doesn't mean that we have to implement it. And I think that this needs to be given serious consideration as to whether we really wanna implement it under the justification, the one justification that I saw that we have. And finally, I suppose there's contrast to the, some columnists in the paper, there does not appear to be unusual amount of parcels or vacant parcels in the TERS area. And I drove down, coming out here, I drove down Main Street and Water Street, and pretty much I can tell you, I saw probably about twelve vacant lots, not more than that. I mean, that's less, way less than five percent of the total parcels in this area. The other is that private enterprise has actually done quite a bit in this area over the past years. For example, the businesses that have come into the area. Action Automotive, Azul's, Barb's Flower Barn, Broken Stone Pizza, Vital Events Hall, Bum Doodler's, Burger King, Hupon Sidney Baker, Buzzies BBQ, Car Quest, Cash Loans on Auto Titles right over here, Central Automotive, Charles Johnson Finance, Chicken Express, City Storage, Crenwellkys did a very extensive renovation, Cricket, Daily Donuts right over here, Depot Square, Dial Custom Homes, East End Market, East End Market Cafe, Elliott Electrical Supply, Fiesta Auto Insurance, Grape Juice, HEB did a major renovation a few years ago, Hippie Chicks, and there's about twenty-five other ones. And these are just the ones that I could pick off the top of my head that I knew about. The bottom line is that I have to suggest to the city council to table this ordinance, direct the city staff to work with businesses and individuals located in the proposed tiers area, determine if the majority are in favor of such a plan, and if so, have the businesses' citizens bring a petition to the city and form a tiers. Otherwise, scrap the plan, and let's go back to where we are and let private enterprise do what they do best and develop the downtown. I'm sure that they'll do it. I'm sure that what I've said and what other folks have said this evening, I'm not gonna have weight very much on yours or citizens' evening, I'm pretty sure it's made up already. But I think we have the right to be able to say what we have to say. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Pablo Brinkman, 3928 Oak Park Drive. Mayor, member of the council. Thanks for the opportunity. I just wanted to let you know that I'm fortunate enough to our firms to represent a lot of the people that have property here in the downtown area and what they've done and the amount of, I guess, work that they've already done on their own behalf, just to protect our downtown, to revitalize, to put efforts and energy in, a lot of their funds, excuse me, funds into it. I'm for it. I think it's positive. One thing that hadn't really been brought up, and I know Bruce probably hit on it, is one of our biggest positive things about Kerrville is, over other downtowns, is what's to my left, and that's the river. And the way the zone is and the way it's put out is to protect, or not to protect, but to incorporate the area that's all along the river, that brings us together, that has something that we have, that Fredericksburg doesn't have, that other towns don't have. So keeping it fresh, keeping, you know, investment in the area that we're outlining is something that's gonna set us apart. So my wife and I are supportive of this, our firms are supportive of this. Thank you all.
Kathy Simmons.
Hello, I'm Mayor Blackburn and Council. My name is Kathy Simmons, and I own property at 1411 Water Street. That's one of my two commercial buildings that I personally built here in Kerrville. I'm within the tiers zone. I'm on the riverfront, so that kind of, that bothers me. I have river property, so the eminent domain really concerns me. So I really want, I've heard back and forth all day, different people saying, yes, it can happen, people saying it can happen. But what I do see here is, I think there's been a rush into this. Of course, you guys have been working on it for a year. The citizens just found out about it, business owners. I found out about it on Facebook three and a half weeks ago. So I'm getting a lot of my information, when I'm reading the paper, what I'm reading on Facebook, what I'm hearing from other citizens. Delaney, I think you've come by my office, but I wasn't there to talk with you. But my concern is, what is the rush? If there's this much concern with citizens, why do we have to rush into this? And the citizens are the ones that voted for you. So why wouldn't you take the citizens' consideration into consideration? Let's just take a breath. Let's step back. Let's wait a couple of months. Let's educate the public on what's happening here. So I'm asking you tonight not to have the second reading, and let's postpone it, and let's have some forums that the people know about, that we can actually come to and learn about what the tiers is really about. Thank you.
That's all I've got. Okay. Mary Ellen Summerlin.
My name's Mary Ellen Summerlin, and I live at 105 Turnberry Circle. And at first, I didn't think I would need to say anything, but I think I have some history here that needs to be mentioned, needs to be part of the mix. When I first was appointed to the city council, I was appointed to the Main Street, to be liaison to the Main Street Committee. So I did some research and some talking and listening to people who'd been involved in downtown development for a long time. And the theme that emerged very clearly was that what's in our way is there is no money to support improvements to downtown, to be there for businesses who need support. There was, for a while, there was a little pot of money that was set aside, maybe enough to help somebody build a new facade or something, but nothing that could really make the difference between a project that could succeed or fail. It was just more or less window dressing, decoration. And I think the point of the TERS has always been, and the first time I ever heard of it was back last winter, in the middle of the Comprehensive Plan, whom we were thinking, what are some tools we can actually use to help downtown? It was never about authority. It was never about wanting more power for the city council. It was always about finding a dedicated source of money. If you're gonna do economic development, it's just like the EIC. There's gotta be that extra half cent of economic development money that's set aside for that purpose. Honestly, in a place like our town, we're little, we know each other, condemnation, eminent domain is the last thing any elected official ever wants to do, ever wants to do. The idea that that's a looming danger all of a sudden is really exaggerated, in my opinion. But for that reason, I like to argue that it's a very good thing for the elected officials to be the board of the TERS, because they can be rid of you in two years, all of them, all of us, at any time we serve there. So if the citizens don't like the kind of decisions you make, they can change you out real, real quick, as long as you're the board of the TERS. Thank you.
Do you have any more? Okay. What? Bruce? Bruce Strickey? Okay.
Bruce Strickey, 615 Earl Garrett. And I'll be very brief. I've written extensively, I've talked with people. George was gracious enough today to spend, I think, George, we were on the phone over an hour and a half, and I appreciate your time and your thoughts, and I really enjoyed our conversation. The vocal spent time with me, and I can't tell you how much I enjoyed that and all. And I'm encouraged tonight by seeing this participation, being someone who comes to these meetings almost every two weeks, and seeing how many people are here and interested. And it's a significant difference. And so I wanna encourage you all to come and be a part of this process as it moves forward, because it's very important. And being involved in the process is what it's all about. That's why you're here tonight. Don't stop. Come and be a part of it, 'cause this is just the first step. This is the first step on a journey to making downtown be the heart of our city and to help us all grow and develop our lives, our families, and our businesses. And that's why it's such a big, passionate issue in all of us. So just real quickly, three things. Open and undeveloped. The property is predominantly open. Open does not mean vacant. Open does not mean that it's not developed. Open is open. Imagine yourself standing in downtown Austin. The property is not open. There are all kinds of buildings and tall structures and things. You cannot look out and see the horizon. The property in downtown Austin is not open. Now, I'm not trying to suggest that we wanna be downtown Austin. That's the last thing I want. But the property does meet the definition of predominantly open. I have a map. I'm glad to share it with anybody. We use it in the office regularly. Tools. This is one tool. We have a lot of tools. There are other tools. We may add some tools. We'll probably add some layers to this tool. Just like a carpenter, we're gonna pull a tool out of our bag, and we're gonna use it, hopefully, very well, because a tool can be used very poorly. It's our goal to use that tool well. And it's important for the participation of the people who are here tonight to bring their passion. And I see it, I hear it, I love it. Be a part of this process and move on to the further definition of the plan. How do we wanna use not public assistance, but public infrastructure? That's what this plan and the funding is primarily set aside to do. Seventy-two percent right now is set aside for public infrastructure, not to go to one single property owner. We can change that. If it should be a hundred percent for public infrastructure, great, let's do that. Be a part of the process. Come to these meetings and let the council know what you want. You elected them to pick the best tools for you. That's why there are representatives. That's why they're here. My last thing. This is already having an impact on my business. I'm a commercial developer and real estate broker here in town. And I already have one client that, learning upon the tours, says, I will only look at property in the TERS. We wanna come to Kerrville. We're not in Kerrville. It's a nice-sized business. It's not huge. It's not hundreds of jobs. It's more than a dozen jobs. They're a business we want in Kerrville. And they only wanna look at opportunities in the TERS. Last, I wanted to ask, Tony, you're not gonna speak, so I want to, as the member of the Government Affairs Committee and the Board of Directors of the local Kerrville Board of Realtors, to know that we sent a letter to the city in support of this. We ask, not only as myself, but as a member of the Kerrville Board of Realtors, that you vote to pass this tonight. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Now, we are going to go to council for discussion. And our two consultants, I would say, be ready, okay? All right, okay. And we're gonna start with Mr. Barudy.
Okay. How are you actually intending to do this? Are we going around, or am I saying my piece and being done, or what are you trying to do?
We'll go around.
Okay. Well, the first thing is, we haven't discussed any of this at any time, whether the first reading or the second, this notion of a hundred percent participation by the city. I would have liked for us to have done that. It does not appear that that's the desire of anybody. I stated last time what I thought we should do as far as that goes. It should, in my view, should not be, I think the amount... It should, in my view, should not be, I think the, the amount of whatever Mr. Pettit calls it organic growth, I think that should continue to go to the general fund, as it always did, would alleviate the burden that's placed on the outside zone people. And with his projected numbers, that puts us at, instead of a hundred percent, a sixty percent participation. I'd like to see us consider that. The, the other part really kind of boils down to most people's comments, even the ones that are pro the TIRZ, ones that are against the TIRZ. I think the, the unifying element here isn't the TIRZ or not the TIRZ, is that everybody seems to be willing to say that they're pro a downtown that's revitalized. We have, actually had an opportunity, I think we're missing it, to unify the city behind that goal. Instead, what we've done is we've got people posturing for pro or con one possible strategy to a revitalized downtown. There are other ways to do it, with the same amount of investment, with the same amount of commitment, that you could be announcing to the world, to the, the brokers, that this town is committed to downtown revitalization, rather than pitting community against community to, to do this. Part of the other problem, Ms. Dool talked about it, is we're asking the citizens to trust the city leadership in what we're doing. But as we're doing that, we're leaking out information, we're not actually giving the whole truth each time. And just as an example, just this eminent domain issue. When this first came up, we were told, can't be done, can't use it for economic development. Then we were told that, oh, wait, you can, but you've always had the ability to do some stuff anyways. And then, now it's kind of a little bit of a modified version of that. It's a little hard to sell an idea to a community when we don't get our ducks in a row when we first present it. So, basically, you know, I'm, you know, now we're talking about blight, because that's, that's the other thing that's coming out a little bit different. Just because we don't, it, it's back to that, what did you say, a tuxedo, dress up a goat in a tuxedo is still a goat? Well, call it, call it blight, or call it, you know, what, economically challenged, I guess would be one way of putting it. Whatever we're putting in there, it's still the same thing, and it gets read the same way, and it ends up being a property, I mean, a purpose, a public purpose to do that. So, I guess I don't really have any questions. My, I'm not going to, I, I don't think I can, pretty much in good conscience, support even the finding, as Ms. Dool pointed out, it seems problematic to me. It's not predominantly open and undeveloped, it's predominantly open or undeveloped, which tends to lead to the equation of the two words. And so, yeah, it does. Actually, out in there, it actually ends up being people seeing them as the same sort of thing. And when we are making this finding, yes, it's, it's not going to be challenged. I mean, whatever we find, we're going to get deference from all the, the courts and the land. What we find is going to stand. But at the end of the day, I got to wake up in the morning, look myself in the, in the mirror and say, yeah, I was truthful with the people, and I don't feel that with this particular finding. So, I guess that's pretty much all I have to say, you don't have to come back around to.
Okay, all right. Ms. Hager?
Thank you. First of all, I would like to thank everyone for participating. It's not easy to get up in front of everybody and express your views, and I appreciate your doing that. I also appreciate the interest that we've had, and we've got a great community here, and it's nice to know that, that you care enough to do what you've done tonight. We don't have a crystal ball. If we had one, we could all look in it and say, this is what Kerrville's going to look like in ten, fifteen years, and life would be simple, and we don't have that. We have to take a risk, we have to take some chances, we've got to do what we think is best for Kerrville, and that should be the only agenda that we've got. This may not be the only tool that will get us where we want, but it's a tool that's been offered to us right now. It's a tool that shouldn't cost us anything, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a burden to anyone. Those two ugly words, that eminent domain, condemnation, blight, three ugly words, I guess, I don't see our community, I don't see our Council in the future taking those and using them in an adverse way. That's not our community. We live together, we're, we work together, we go to church together, we go to school together, we see each other in HEB, and we're, we don't do those kinds of things. And that, I, we need to trust that we're not going to start doing that kind of thing. And we need to make sure we don't in the future. But this is something for our kids, it's something for our grandkids, it will put, it's a means of being able to develop the downtown. We all know that needs to be done, we all want it to be done, but it's a way of doing it that shouldn't, shouldn't, as I said before, hurt anyone. It's extra money that will sit in this, I call it a savings account, until we're ready to use it. And, and then, of course, we need to make wise decisions as to how we use it, no question about that. But we're intelligent people, we should be able to do those kinds of things. So, I think that it's something that can get us started, can move us down the road, and can bring our downtown into the kind of downtown that we all want to see.
I want to say I'm also in favor of the TIRZ, because it represents the funding necessary to revitalize our downtown. And without that funding, the many great ideas that I heard and have reiterated to me recently, that came out of the 2050 Plan, will just be words. That's what they'll be. There'll be a great piece of paper on, in a book on a shelf. So, funding is critical. This desire was identified during that planning process of the 2050 Plan by the Downtown Steering Committee, not us, other committee, citizens from the, from Kerrville. And it's specifically addressed in the Plan on page 223, if anyone wants to look it up. There's, there's, there's action ideas, there are, the TIRZ is specifically in that, on that page, before this was even a discussion today. So, that goes back to November of last year, when it was first brought up. I know other projects have been adamantly opposed, but cooler minds prevailed, and we currently have. The much debated River Trail, which I love, the sports complex, which brought two or three teams of players to pine and plow this weekend, and the Water Rees Pond, to name a few, which I believe are very good for Kerrville, and kept Kerrville moving forward. So, another benefit to this incentive is the increased sales tax, which will come as new businesses move into the zone, not to mention the residual benefits like additional jobs and residents into our city and our tax roll. I know that it is a fact that TIRZ cannot impose eminent domain, two separate subjects. This is a power only the city has, and is never anxious to use. Like Ms. Summerlin said, it would be the last thing I would ever want to see on a discussion at all. Because it's, it is, these, y'all are our friends, you're our acquaintances, our neighbors, the business owners that we go to regularly. So, we'd look far away from having to do something like that. I've spent many hours the past several weeks, meeting with business owners in and out of the zone, to, to listen, to help explain. I go back when I have questions, I got more information, went back out, and did my best to deliver the information. And I think this is a good tool for our downtown, and I think you might even see another zone, because I believe it will be successful. I know other cities have up to four and five zones, so that's a very good possibility. Anyway, I, I like to think you would trust me, because I do take your concerns and considerations into account, and I will continue to do so. Thank you.
Mayor, I, I want to give you the last word, but I want to say one thing in response to that, because she referenced page 223, and it's on the Comprehensive Plan. And just so we're all clear, on that same page, one of the guiding principles, I think, is what she mentioned, encourage reinvestment in downtown. It also has sort of a problematic phrase in here that says, and it's one of the action items in the Plan, eight point four, D eight point four. But on 223, it says, assist in the assembly of land for new downtown investments. The public sector can aid the private sector in the broader endeavor of downtown revitalization by helping to assemble a portfolio of properties suitable for investment or reinvestment. I'm not saying what that is, but it, it is, in the scheme of things, just a little bit disturbing. So, anyways.
I would like to say, I have long had a commitment to downtown and the general area. When Shriner Department Store closed, and the hospital closed, I asked to meet with stakeholders in downtown. We met over the KACC, there were twenty-six who came, and we brainstormed for two hours. Okay, the hospital's closing, Shriner Department Store's closing, what do we do with downtown? What do we want to see here? What do we want to see, make happen here? And it was a very good time, and I think gave some folks a little bit of hope. It's been slow in coming in terms of realizing those dreams, but nevertheless, it was one part of, of some rebuilding. And then, eleven years ago, I did a series of columns in the Kerrville Daily Times about downtown. What could happen, what the possibilities were, what the potential was, and, and all of that. So, having said that, when I saw this TIRZ proposal, and knew that it had been done in three hundred and thirteen places around the state, yes, there are two, they're problematic, in Lubbock and, and in El Paso, but the legislature dealt with those, with those problems. When I knew that in three hundred and thirteen places around the state, these had been used, and really used successfully. If you want to take a look sometime at Georgetown, in the, in the Courthouse Square, and dripping springs, it's already been mentioned, and there are others. So, I, I believe in it, I believe it is a, a good tool, and I think it's, it's time for us to move ahead. One of the other things I'll say to you in regard to a commitment that I have to local, to the local business climate, when I, when I ran for office, over and over again, I talked about my desire to see a solid, strong business climate here. And, and I have worked for that before coming in, and continue to. I will leave tomorrow on a trip to look at what can be done to help local people start businesses here. Why? Because I want to see it happen, and I want to see local people succeed. So, why would we move ahead? And, and, you know, Don, Kevin, and Gary, and Kathy, and Barbara, and others have, have basically said, let's wait. Couple of things. I think now's the time. I think by acting now to get the 2018 tax base, so we know where that is, and then to move forward with the TIRZ, is important, and it's vital. Bruce said something a while ago. He's got somebody that if we pass the TIRZ, they want to, they want to put their property in, they want to invest here. There are some other things that I am convinced are going to happen, if we say yes. And, and, and I think it'll give some people a, a sense of excitement and possibility. Hey, this, this town cares about this downtown area. So, in light of that, do I hear a motion?
I move, I would like Mr. Mayor to make that motion. I move that we adopt and approve ordinance number 2018-19, designating a contiguous geographic area within the city as a reinvestment zone number one, City of Kerrville, to support revitalization.
All right. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second.
I, I want to be clear, are you all going to adopt the language that Mr. Plummer proposed this, you all have?
Yeah, right. Adopted language, and at a hundred percent capture. Yeah, okay.
Do you want me to?
Well, I wasn't clear with your motion, so I think it needs to be clear, your motion, that you want to adopt the language as presented this evening.
Added by Mr. Plummer.
So, if we say, and adopt the language proposed by Mr. Plummer.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion?
You second that.
I do, I second that.
Yeah, you got a second there. Okay, all in favor with the upraised hand? And all opposed? Okay, all right. So, the motion carries, and someone would invite Mr. Vocal back in. The other thing I will tell you, we are about halfway through. And so, we are going to take a seven and a half minute break. I might note that Mrs. Seigerman and her husband, who just left, are celebrating their thirty-sixth anniversary here at the City Council.
For all of us, later, yes. For more than one reason.
Okay.
Can you, can you call the camera people to scan the room real quick and just show them how easy it is to empty a room?
Yeah, it is. All right. We're at a 4B. Ms. Brown, if you would read that for us.
Ordinance number 2018-15, amending the city's zoning code by amending Article 11-I-3, definitions and interpretations of words and phrases, and Articles 11-1-4 through 11-1-11, to amend the land use tables for various zoning districts, to add parking structure and parking lots standalone as uses that are either permitted by right or as a conditional use within each specific specified district, containing a cumulative clause, containing a savings and severability clause, providing for a maximum penalty or fine of $2,000, and ordering publication. This ordinance was approved on first reading on September 11th, 2018, with a vote of four to one.
Okay. Do we have any speakers?
Um...
No. Okay. This is our second round with this. Any questions or comments from Council?
Yeah, I got, I got some comments.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's all related to the, the ordinance as it's being presented with regards to the amendment to 11 dash, I guess it's an I, dash four, G. Okay, so, basically, you know, we did get some information about it. So, we've been told that this, the proposed amendment is essentially opening the door to what I'm terming cross-zone servicing, and won't go into that so much. The barriers against cross-zone servicing are kind of, they're somewhat well-established in our zoning codes, as well as other cities. That is exemplified by the screening requirements that we currently have between some zones, and, and the original version of this particular section, which expressly prohibits cross-zone access slash use for parking. P&amp;Z had a number of discussions concerning the standalone parking lot, garage use, but did not really directly discuss or analyze the issue of this cross-zone servicing. I've reviewed the many discussions in the P&amp;Z meetings in the Council, and I cannot find anywhere that the, the request was made to change this policy. I believe that the change was made essentially to accommodate Mr. Motherall's specific request, which was to get the ability to have a parking lot in that RT zone, and if he had gotten that request, he was going to need this modification in order to actually utilize that parking lot. So, since Mr. Motherall's request is essentially being denied by our proposal here, with the land use tables not including the RT zone, it seems, and since no P&amp;Z or Council discussion has occurred regarding cross-zone servicing, and no explicit request was made to allow that, it would seem, I don't know if inappropriate is the right word, but to modify this particular portion of the zoning code without that, without discussing its ramifications, seems maybe not prudent, because there are some ramifications to it. So...
Okay, Mr. Paxton, could you address that?
Planning Commission did not specifically address that section, but looking at the request from Mr. Motherall, and the impact that this would have on other standalone parking lots, there is certainly an assumption that that standalone parking lot would be benefiting someone, which may not be in that district. These being looked at on case-by-case basis for the conditional use permit, those impacts would be addressed individually. So, we did include... So we did include that provision in Section G to allow that cross-zoning use between separate districts.
Okay. So, yeah, it's a recommendation of staff and P and Z.
Correct.
Yeah, but without discussion at P and Z or council regarding those ramifications, it was essentially, as you just said, to accommodate the applicant's request, because this wasn't originally a change made by an applicant, not some staff review that occurred that we were going to do something.
Correct.
So, and you just confirmed basically that there really wasn't any discussion about the ramifications of zone bleed, which is kind of what we're talking about. This cross-zone servicing is actually pushing one zone into the other, essentially. So, you know, anyways.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion on four B?
I would make a motion to pass ordinance twenty-eighteen dash fifteen as proposed to include the changes to the land use tables, however disregarding the amendments to Section eleven I, four G of the zoning codes, leaving this particular section unchanged. For the reasons I just.
Or is that a clear, is that clear?
No, I'm, I'm not clear.
I, okay, so I'm, I'm making the motion. I'll just explain it, right? I don't have to restate it. But basically, the proposed amendment that we have in front of us has a bunch of land use tables in them, and I'm not suggesting any change to that. There is one section, eleven dash I dash four G, which has one little phrase that's been added. It's blue lined in our packet, and I'm suggesting leaving that in its original form without the blue line additions. That's the motion.
Where are the blue line additions? I'm just curious.
It's in the.
As matter of right or permitted upon.
Okay, I see, yeah, the second and third page.
Huh? Yes. That's the one. That's the part. So the motion is to accept the whole thing as proposed minus those changes to that one section. That's the motion.
So it's pretty much just taken out the conditional use part?
No, we, uh, yeah.
Because it's permitted.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Is that kind of the way it is? Is that a conditional use based on a conditional use?
Say that again.
Is it going to be like a conditional use based on a conditional use? No, that section as originally drafted would not allow one district to use parking lot in a different zoning district. With the add-on of a standalone parking lot, it's not directly benefiting anything on that property. This provision as amended would allow an adjacent property or nearby property the access to use the standalone parking lot, whether or not it's in the same zoning district. Hmm. Well, I mean, it says it's as permitted by right or conditional use. Is that, I don't, I guess.
The conditional use.
You're going to take conditional use out, and I'm not seeing why it needs to be in there.
So, yeah, ba- basically, it's to, correct me if I'm wrong, right? So the, the verbiage is in there is stating that I've got a, a restaurant in one zone, and I want to utilize a parking lot in a neighboring zone. Okay? Prior to any changes, you could not utilize that parking lot from the restaurant or, you know, regularly as a restaurant use unless the neighboring zone, the one with the parking lot, also permitted by right.
The restaurant.
The restaurant in that zone. That's really what the original said.
Right.
Okay, and so this changing.
Actually, the original said it has to be the same zoning district.
That's what it, it has to be the same zoning.
Unless it.
On those contiguous properties.
No, it said, it was, it was actually with the per.
The zone is, the zone is.
One's in twenty-one.
They could be two different zones.
As long as the zone permits the use. That's correct.
Yes, right? So if, if it was two commercial zones that happened to be different zones, that would have been allowable, but this was an RT, and RT does not have restaurant use by right. So the change is to say that the, you now could do that cross-zone, if you could get a permit to put a parking lot in there.
Right.
You now could utilize that parking lot from a restaurant, provided that restaurant had the ability to get a conditional use permit in the RT zone. Not that it's actually given one now.
No, no. That would allow the. It still wouldn't allow it in RT whatsoever.
No, I, I, I know, but it.
This is, the general rule here is first sentence. So no person shall use property located in one zoning district to provide parking for or access to the use located on property located in another zoning district. And here's the exception, unless the property being used for said parking or access is also zoned to permit, I'm going to remove the language, the use for which such parking or access is desired. So you have two districts, but you have the uses that are allowed within each district, and that, that use, if, if that property is used for parking or access, you can do that. This, this comma and extra language just modifies permit and expands it.
Right. It expands it to where if you could conceivably get a conditional use permit for a restaurant in the RT zone, that you then could use, granted, the land use tables didn't get modified this way, but had then actually, then, then you could use that across. And so it doesn't, in, in that language, it doesn't require that I've gotten a restaurant conditional use permit in there. It just says if it's a possibility.
Okay, we got a motion.
And that motion is pretty much taking the conditional use out?
That's correct.
I don't have a problem with that. I'll second that.
Okay. It, there's a, let me say, I, I understand need for clarification in zoning, but this was before us before and we passed it.
Correct.
It's a recommendation of the staff and P and Z. Can we not say that the, the issue that Mr. Rudy has raised will be looked at seriously by you and Development Services? Okay.
Of course we can, but that wasn't the motion, right?
Yeah, I see it's, it's being.
You know, this is basically making a change to zoning without a discussion about that particular change. That's really what the motion's about, so you can do.
Excuse me, Councilman Green, I don't think we're on the same pages to your comment. If a restaurant, I'm going to change zoning districts on you, consistent with this draft.
Okay.
A restaurant adjacent to an R-three zoning district, the R-three requests a conditional use permit for a parking lot.
Okay.
This provision in Section G would allow the restaurant, which is not allowed in R-three, to utilize the parking in R-three. It doesn't mean that the zoning district in which the parking lot sits has to have a conditional use permit for the restaurant. It's specific back to the use of the parking.
No, that's not actually correct.
Okay, then, then let's, let's.
Which is why we shouldn't have it in there. That's what I'm saying.
Let's see if, let's see if the motion passes. All in favor of the motion made by Mr. Rudy? If you'd let it be known by the raised hand? Okay, all opposed? All right, we are two and two?
I'm abstaining. I'm confused.
Okay, okay.
Mrs. Tiger, you do need to.
Oh, I need to do.
You do need to vote.
Okay, all right, then I'm voting against.
Okay. Let's come back to the original ordinance number twenty-eighteen dash fifteen.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-eighteen dash fifteen on the second reading.
Okay, all right. All in favor by the upraised hand? And, and, okay, we got four to one, okay? All right, any opposed?
You seconded it.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Second.
I made the motion, so I don't know who seconded it.
Oh, sorry. I seconded.
So your hand went up not to vote, your hand went up to say this or something, or did you vote?
No, I, I thought she was seconded, but I guess not.
Okay.
So we got a first and a second, we got a motion and a second, can you just ask for a vote again?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, do that.
All in favor of passing this as written, let it be known by the raised hand? Okay, all right, four one. Okay.
Okay, all opposed, no.
Yeah, right.
And one last comment, if he could just, yeah, because what you just started to say, I think actually was, kind of made my point, because I don't think you were actually explaining. So I'll talk to you about it, and we'll just see.
Okay, now on four C, for the second reading, we have, and I want Ms. Brown to read that, we have passed this unanimously on first reading.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Ordinance number twenty-eighteen dash twenty, amending the city's zoning code by changing the zoning district for property out of William Watts Survey number sixty-five, abstract three sixty-four, and the William Watts Survey number sixty-six, abstract number three sixty-five, specifically lots number one through six and lots twenty-two through twenty, to thirty-four, which make up a portion of Comanche Trace Phase thirteen, a subdivision within the City of Curville, Kerr County, Texas, and more commonly known as those lots addressed as three thousand one through three thousand eleven and two thousand and two through two thousand twenty-four, Clubhouse Drive and one thousand one, Comanche Hills. By removing the area from a planned development zone district, PDD, and an R-one single-family residential zoning district, and placing it within a residential cluster zoning district containing a cumulative clause, containing a savings and severability clause, providing for a maximum penalty or fine of two thousand dollars, ordering publication, and providing other matters relating to the subject. This ordinance was approved on first reading on September eleventh, two thousand and late, two thousand and eighteen with a unanimous vote.
Okay. Are you, do we hear a motion? You ready to move on that?
I just have one question I didn't catch the first time. Is there, this might not even be the place to do it, but I noticed a road, it was the same road, but Clubhouse Drive and Clubhouse Road, is that?
That's correct. The original plat from, the original section of Comanche Trace and Phase eleven was labeled as Clubhouse Road on the plat. Phase thirteen was approved and recorded as Clubhouse Drive. We're currently working with the developer to file a correction plat on that.
Okay.
All right.
I move that we accept ordinance number twenty-eighteen dash twenty, amending the city's zoning cord, code by changing the zoning district for property out of the William Watts Survey number sixty-five, abstract number three sixty-four. How far do I need to go?
I think we've got it.
Is that good? All right, thank you.
I think we've got it, all right.
I'll second it.
All right. Do we have a motion on that?
Yeah, they just.
And I seconded.
I seconded.
Oh, wait, who, who made it?
Judy made the motion.
I made the motion.
Okay, and, okay, all right. All in favor of that motion, if you'd let it be known by the raised hand, and carries five zero. Okay, four D again is, we heard it, you, we voted it unanimously previously. Ms. Brown?
Ordinance number twenty-eighteen dash sixteen, amending the city's zoning code by changing the zoning district for lots fifty-two, fifty-three, and fifty-four, block fourteen, the Parsons addition, a subdivision within the City of Curville, Kerr County, Texas, and more commonly known as two thirteen, two fifteen, and two twenty-one, West Barnett Street, by removing the area from R-one A residential zoning district and placing it within the eleven C zoning district containing a cumulative clause, containing a savings and severability clause, providing for a maximum penalty or fine of two thousand dollars, ordering publication, and providing other matters relating to this subject. This ordinance was approved on the first reading on September eleventh, two thousand and eighteen unanimously.
All right. Do we have?
Mr. Mayor, I will move that we adopt ordinance number twenty-eighteen dash sixteen, amending the city's zoning cord, code by changing the zoning district for lots fifty-two, fifty-three, and fifty-four, block fourteen, Parsons addition, a subdivision within the City of Curville, Kerr County, Texas.
Okay, this is, as it says here, the famous door project. Discussion?
You need a second. Did we get a second?
I'll second.
I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, Mr. Vogel seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, let it be known by the raised hand? Okay. Come to number five, ordinance first reading in five A, and if you would read it for us.
Ordinance number twenty-eighteen dash twenty-two, amending in part ordinance number ninety-nine dash eighteen as amended by adopting revised rate schedules for residential services, miscellaneous services, charges, distributed generation rider, power cost adjustment factor rider, outdoor area lighting, and a new community solar LMI household rider containing a cumulative clause, containing a savings and severability clause, and establishing an effective date.
I'd like to just introduce our colleagues from K-Pub who are here with us, and they're going to present. We have Mike Whitler, the CEO, Jill Sadberry, the Chief Financial Officer, and also Joe Anderson, the Customer Service Manager. So, Jill?
In the fall of two thousand and seventeen, as K-Pub was preparing their budget for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, we felt it was time to reassess our rates. The last cost of service study and rate adjustment was done in two thousand and twelve. A cost of service study, the study analyzes the cost to serve each class, and it gave us a five-year financial projection of operating income, cash balance, and debt service coverage. The biggest concern by the consultant was K-Pub's declining operating income. At the current rates we charge, operating income is set to deteriorate to a net loss in five years. Utility Financial Solutions recommended a two-point-two percent overall rate increase in the first year with a projected two percent increase in the future. Utility Financial Services performed a detailed analysis of the, our current rate structure and recommended new rates to meet cost of service and correct the rate class cross-subsidies. This slide shows all of the projected percentage rate class increases. You can see the dollar amounts as well as the percentage residential at two-point-six percent, outdoor area lighting at one percent. The commercial rate increases vary from one and a half percent to four-point-two percent. Sorry. The customer service charge that we charge is currently five dollars and twenty-six cents a month at this time. The cost of service study indicated it should be fourteen dollars and eighty-eight cents. The K-Pub Board did not want to put that on our customers all in one time, so our plan is to get to cost of service in two steps. The proposed customer charge for this next year is ten dollars and twenty-five cents. Excuse me. This allows, this, the, sorry, the kilowatt charge will actually go down as a result of the customer service charge going up. The kilowatt charge will go from eight point two-two-four cent a kilowatt to just over eight cents a kilowatt. Customer charge is based on the fixed cost of the system. When the customer charge is lower than it should be, customers that use smaller amounts of electricity do not pay their fair share of the cost of operating and maintaining the system. Raising the fixed component of our rates and lowering the KWH charge lessens the class subsidies that are currently in place. This slide depicts the dollar impact to our customers based on usage. Our typical low-usage customers are vacation homes, guest homes, such as the ones that use the top two lines, they're a hundred to three hundred kilowatts. Their rate, their dollar impact to their bill a month would be between four dollars and thirty-six cents, four dollars and seventy-eight cents. Our average customer uses eleven hundred kilowatts a month, and they will see a two dollar and sixty-eight cent change in their bill. Our smallest residences tend to be the one-bedroom apartments. They'll use around five hundred kilowatts. Their bill will go up three dollars and ninety-four cents. And as you can see, our high-use customers will actually see a small decrease in their bill as they are no longer paying the, more than their share of the fixed cost. In summary, the, the ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-two gives a two-point-six percent residential rate increase, a one percent outdoor area lighting rate increase. It revises the miscellaneous service fees. It creates the new LMI solar rate and makes minor adjustments to the power cost adjustment factor and distributed generation riders. Any questions?
Can you talk about your high-use customers, you know, paying less and less? They have previously been underwriting. They have previously been underwriting the...
The low-use customers.
The low, lowest customers. Okay, okay.
So, that's one way to look at it, but is it not also safe to say? I mean, I, I grew up in the seventies when the energy crisis, you know, we're all about conservation and whatnot. Um, so aren't we flipping that on its head by actually somewhat rewarding the larger customers? It's, it's kind of an anti-conservation rate adjustment, isn't it?
I don't think.
I mean, the goal of the rate increase, I'm, I'm, I'm supporting rate increase. I mean, you need, you need two-point-two percent revenue increase or something like that, right? Um, but the way we're going about it, and I get the whole base pay volumetric rate thing, but brass tacks is the chart you got up there now, and, um, what's the reasoning behind kind of getting away from incentivizing conservation?
Mike, you wanna, you wanna take that?
So, so you're right, like Austin Energy has a tiered rate structure, whereas you consume more, uh, you're charged more and more. The, this rate design is based on our cost of service, and, and we don't incur bigger costs as a customer uses more, so we are not, we don't have that in our design, and our, our board hasn't chosen to pursue that. Now, what we do for energy conservation is budget separate funds, and we have energy audits, rebates for HVAC, rebates for windows, rebates for insulation, and that shows in that, um, our kilowatt-hour sales are actually flat and projecting to actually start going down. Even though we add about two hundred customers a year, uh, energy efficiency improvements are reducing our, our kilowatt-hour sales. Um, and, and that's really the reason that we need this rate increase. It, it's, it's because we, we're not growing, we're not growing our sales, and, and so our sales aren't keeping up with increases in labor and increases in contracted, uh, uh, services and increases in material. I'm sorry, I kind of went on there a little too much, but back to your question, you're right. We're not, uh, the rate itself is not incentivizing conservation, but...
It's a policy shift, really, right?
Well, not for us, because our rate has never, our, our rate has had one structure, uh, you know, it, our rate has had one structure. We've never had that tiered rate structure like you see with an Austin Energy.
Right, but, but as you display it here, it, it is gonna, our rate increase is actually gonna be a decrease to the bigger customer, so that's, that's a policy shift.
No, the, because the intention was always to pass on cost of service, and these adjustments have needed to be, to be made to reflect actual cost of service for what the customer use, uses. I don't really see it as a policy change. We're just correcting, uh, you know, correcting basically...
Compensation.
Improper allocation in the rate.
Okay.
And Mike, you had mentioned, a question I had was, how many new, new, uh, customers do you get? I mean, we've had, we have had some building, you, you mentioned two hundred. Is that...
Yeah, that typically, we're growing two hundred customers a year. We have twenty-two thousand seven hundred customers. So that's less than one percent customer growth per year. Our sales have been flat, uh, basically since I've been, for the past twelve years, we've been hovering right under five hundred thousand megawatt hours, or five hundred million kilowatt hours in sales, uh, for, for basically the past ten, twelve years, and, and our latest forecast, our forecast had always still shown increasing sales, uh, but our, our latest one actually starts showing a decline in the sales. It's a little, little more conservative than what we've done in the past. Um, one other, one other question that I know I need to a, address relates to, to the loan to the city, because I know that, I know that there are those that question that. So when the, the loan was made, uh, the board evaluated our long-term power supply needs and elected to, to establish a long-term rate stabilization fund. Where we see a need, uh, to procure new power supply is in twenty-twenty-four, and so we're, uh, we loaned the money to the city, and then as we're, as payments are made back, we have a long-term rate stabilization fund that was established two years ago, and we're setting those funds back over there to use in twenty-twenty-four and, and beyond, because until then, we're under essentially full requirements, uh, uh, agreements. Our ultimate goal is, is to have long-term stable rates. And so when they looked at, when the board looked at, uh, the funds that we had at the time and, and the needs that we had with procuring power, the need that they saw in the real application for those funds for us was in twenty-twenty-four.
There was another...
The economic development rates, are you, is that, is this in?
The, uh, so, so the, the K-Pub Board, uh, with a resolution, or with an ord, ordinance in nineteen ninety-nine, the City Council authorized the K-Pub Board, uh, to make the commercial rate adjustments uh, without bringing those to council. And so we have other commercial adjustments that were shown in a previous slide that, uh, we don't have to bring to you because we were previously authorized to make those adjustments. As part of those, we, we are proposing a new economic development rate that will, uh, target three different types of, of businesses. And again, this isn't for consideration today. Uh, one is, one is expansion in primary industry, uh, two is load expansion, and, and the third is, is the, uh, actually for the TERS district.
Are they forever rates, or are they like a time period?
They're, they're, for the first two classes, they're five-year rates, and, and the discount ranges from about eight to fifteen percent. And, and what we're doing there, uh, in the case of fifteen percent, uh, the consultant, the col, consultant looked at the cost to serve under that rate class, and, and, and basically our costs are covered with seventy percent of the rate, um, and the thirty, thirty percent, uh, make, and, and you'll catch me if I'm saying this wrong, but the, uh, the, the thirty, the, the thirty percent can be, up to thirty percent could be rebated to the customer without affecting our other customers. We cover all our costs with the, with the first seventy percent. Um, we looked at a ramp discount, but just to keep things simple, we picked a number in the middle. And, and so that, that would be a five-year, five-year incentive for, for primary industries and significant load growth, and it would be a two-year incentive for the TERS district.
And is it gonna be to new businesses, or is it to, like, you say the TERS? So, everybody in the TERS, do they get an option? I mean, do they get an opportunity, or is it new business coming in?
So, the, and I can, I, I, I'd be happy to email all of y'all the, the information. It's in the K-Pub Board Packet as well. For, for the first two, that it, it's eligible to existing and new customers. For the TERS district, it, it's a, and all of these, all of these, um, we have to make a determination that the incentive, uh, was a significant factor in the, in the business deciding to locate here. Um, so with the TERS, it, it has to be a new business, and it has, and, and they have to apply before making that decision. So if someone has effectively already made the decision to, to open a new business in the TERS, they would not be eligible. They need to come to us first. I mean, if they've already made the decision to open the business, then they, you know, the logic there is, is that, is that they didn't need the incentive. And, uh, I mean, and we, I looked at a lot of the, we got feedback from our consultant, number one, and then looked at a lot of, uh, economic development incentives, uh, that you find nationwide.
Okay, we need to move back tonight to the rate schedule.
Yeah, so...
Uh, do we have a motion in regard to five A?
I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance number twenty-eighteen dash twenty-two on the first reading.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second.
Okay. All right, any further discussion?
Um, I'll just explain my vote before it comes. You know, I, I've outlined the, what I'm calling a policy shift, but bottom line, the, the disincentive, if you will, to conservation. Um, the other aspect of it with the economic development, which we aren't voting on, I get that, but, um, is, we're kind of making some choices policy-wise in the city that are doing this repeatedly. We have the water sewer rates increasing for average user so that the reuse water rates can be subsidized for the elite user. We have tourist funding structure that's gonna increase the burden on the outside of the zone on the average residential, and now we've got electronic, or electric power rates that are arguably doing the same sort of thing to, um, you know, incentivize the, or subsidize the, those on the backs of the others. And, um, so I, I just, I think there's, I'm, like I say, I'm all for collecting more rates. You need that to, to meet the need. Um, I just think there would have been a, a more staying in the conservation rate mode. I would have liked to have seen that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, let it be known by the upraised hand. Okay, all opposed?
Yeah, I, I'd go ahead and say for it.
For it, okay, five oh, okay.
I've made my statements about it.
All right. Uh, now, six A, Amendments to City Council Procedure Rules for Meetings, and if you will, read that.
Amendments to the City Council Procedure Rules for Meetings.
I'd like to make a motion.
All right.
Uh, I move that we approve the amendments as presented with the language in rule four-point-eight. Uh, limit each council member to five minutes taken out.
Wait, give it to me again.
Approve the amendments to the City Council Procedure Rules for Meetings, exception of the rule four-point-eight with taking out the language. Limit each council member to five minutes.
Okay. Okay, is there a second?
I'd second that.
All right, there is a second. Uh, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of that motion, let me know.
Oh.
Did you, wait, 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 did you sign?
I signed up to speak.
Oh.
Okay, okay, Brown.
If I can get just a second?
Yeah, okay.
I wanted to congratulate whoever thought of coming up with this rule six-point-seven. That is very important, and I'm glad to see that y'all have done that. And as far as rule four-point-eight on the council members limited to five minutes, I think that's a good thing. And going back many times and listening to the recordings, after someone speaks for five minutes, all they're doing is repeating themselves. And, you know, I think the citizens are smart enough, and the council is smart enough, that they get it after it's repeated the third time. You go beyond four and five and six and ten times, people lose interest, and it makes the meeting not be as productive as it could be. So, I think the five minutes is a good thing. Um, however, uh, the allotted time, as it's stated here, includes questions asked by staff. And I think that sometimes staff needs to ask the questions to know what the intentions are. And I don't think that that time should be, uh, counted toward the council members' five minutes. That's just my comments. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Do we need the flexibility to make that adaptation?
What it says is, uh, council are, a lot of times questions asked of staff, not staff asking questions.
Yeah, but what she was talking about is their staff answers being counted towards the time. Is that not correct?
Yeah.
Right.
Right, but it doesn't mean that the next, there's another round, and that they can continue that dialogue. So it's...
Well, that was the other, that was the other thing I was gonna ask about it, because we had, you see, it says agenda item at one time. I, I left our workshop confused, 'cause I thought what we were saying was five minutes per agenda. Then I heard from other people, no, they meant five minutes per, like, question, if you wanna call it that, on a particular agenda item. And then when this says, uh, five minutes per agenda item at one time, I don't even know what that means anymore. So what, what did we mean when we were doing, when, when we do this, what are we trying to do? Is it five minutes per agenda item?
Yes.
Okay, so...
With staff's response?
Yeah, but it, but basically that's it. So we got an agenda item, so however I chop up my five minutes, whether it's on one question or five questions, then I'm, my clock is running through all of those, so it's a, what do you call it, aggregate five minutes per agenda, right?
Well, I kind of had it envisioned where if there was unnecessary commentary back and forth with staff, the, the timer would be off, but it would pick right back up at wherever you, you did leave off. So you don't get another new five minutes.
Okay, so basically what you're saying is you get a, you can aggregate five minutes, but you would take exception then to including the response time in that five minutes, right? 'Cause that's in there.
You know, one of the things I remember as we left was we were gonna try this and, and see. It wasn't, this was something we haven't done before.
Right.
And I know you're trying to define it more clearly, but I think...
Well, I need to know what we're doing. That's, I'm just trying to understand it, not, you know, not trying to catch you in something, I'm just...
No, I know.
What, what is it that we're doing here? Is it five minutes?
I thought it was...
Aggregate and including the response.
A total of five minutes per council member, per item on the agenda.
Yeah, I think...
We didn't discuss necessarily questions from the staff, I don't think. I don't think we came to conclude.
Questions from them, remember, it's their response to our question.
Of or from, or of two.
Uh, the, the deal is, if you look at it, if you look at it, we've got, um, if all of us took every, uh, each of us took five minutes on each issue, and we got twelve issues, we got five hours.
Right, I'm not trying to rehash all that, just tell me what we're approving here. That's what I'm saying.
My understanding is, we're looking at, we're looking at five minutes per agenda item. I agree with you at the point of that if we're asking the staff a question to clarify or something like that, that that should not be included in those five minutes. But I think, I think the, the basic thing is to move ahead on it and adapt it as we need to, if we need to.
Mr. Mayor, if I might comment, um, just in my experience, it's gonna be really hard for the, the staff to start and stop the clock.
On and off, and on and off, yeah.
And making judgment calls about, well, that's a question from the staff, but it was, okay, do I add it or not? And restarting the clock and make, you know, it's, it's too difficult. So what works best is the council member gets X amount of time, whether that's five minutes or it's ten minutes, but that includes questions of staff or consultants or people that spoke at the podium, whatever.
And that's what it says here.
And, and you could have a second round if you wanted to, but, but I would rather do it all as one chunk, but, because to really make that come off well and smooth, we're gonna have to aggregate it.
Yeah, okay. Well, I've been watching Senate hearings and US House hearings, and it's interesting how they have the clock on every speaker. And, uh, all right, um, okay, we got a motion and a second. Uh, let's vote on that, and that is taking out the five-minute...
Yes, sir. Four-point, take out the language of, limit council members to five minutes.
Yeah, okay, limit council members to five minutes.
No, it's, the motion is to take it out.
Yeah, to take it out, right, right. So, if you want the five-minute limit taken out, then you would vote for this. If you don't, then we'll go back to the original. All in favor of, of the motion with the five-minute out, let it be known by the raised hand? And any opposed, alike side? Okay, let's go back to the original motion then, six A. And do I hear a motion in regard to adoption of that?
I move that we adopt the amendment to City Council Procedure Rules for Meetings as presented.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, raise the hand. It is four to zero, okay?
Four to one?
Huh? Four to one, I'm sorry. Four to one, yes, yes, sorry about that. Mr. Brudy, were you trying to make K-Pub like Austin?
No, I was actually trying to make K-Pub Kerrville like, um, all the other energy, uh, companies that are focused on conservation with their rates. That's all. Didn't have anything to do with Austin, had to do with DC growing up.
All right. Okay, six B, Professional Service Agreement with Kim Lee Horn?
Yes, so Mayor and Council, this is to go ahead and administer the process that we're about to...
We need to read it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Six B is Professional Service Agreement with Ken, Kim Lee Horn to update the City of Kerrville zoning ordinance, zoning map, subdivision ordinance, and key development standards.
Okay, so, um, as I was saying, this is to help us through a process to develop development-related codes, starting with the zoning code, subdivision code next, a grouping of other codes related to development, whether that's side law... whether that's sidewalk scores, park dedication, or what have you. Um, we are beginning that process, uh, next week. On Wednesday of next week, we'll have our first code review committee meeting, our kickoff meeting. Um, I think it's gonna be some good attendance, but this would hire Kimberly Horn, who helped us with the, uh, Curville 2050 process. They, um, would be the ideal candidates, as at least in staff's, um, eyes, uh, because of their knowledge of Curville 2050, but also their expertise with regard to best practices and, um, administration of development codes. Uh, they have, they are, they have added an attorney to their team for this specific effort to make sure that, um, you know, we we get it right in terms of what's out there and what what works, what doesn't work and and what's legal. So, um, anyway, the staff would recommend that you all approve the contract. It is within the the budget that's been approved for this in next year's budget of 300,000, just under that. Uh, we did scale down the scope a bit to make sure that we stayed within budget. But I think that what they have scheduled out here will will help us get to the end. You'll see the process is really a a year-long process almost, uh, to get through all of that. Um, and the idea is that we would come out in three different, um, uh, I guess stages where we wouldn't wait till the end of nine months or 10 months or 12 months and to give it all to the P and Z and you all at one time. We would meter it out, probably zoning first, as I said, and then subdivision code and then everything else. Includes town hall meetings, uh, and public input, um, to get, to make sure that, you know, we have more than just the typical public hearings and council action, uh, so quite an extensive process. Um, and again, it'd be staff's recommendation that you all approve the contract as presented.
Okay, any discussion? Let's start with here with Ms. Segerman.
I believe that this consultant knows Curville very well because of the extensive time they spent here drafting and adopting the 2050 plan. So, um, with regard to the fee, you know, I'm not an expert on what the fees are around the country, but I believe it's probably in line with what they can command in any given territory with their expertise. And if we've got, we've got this plan and now we need to to act on some of the requirements of the plan and, um, I think we need help doing it, actually. I think a consultant would be very helpful in guiding us and keeping us on track like they did, like they did before, so.
Uh, my question, we have not put together a committee to do this yet, is that correct?
Yes, we have, this is the one that you all gave.
Well, this is the one, okay, this was the development.
Right, so we have 15 members.
Pardon?
We have 15 members and.
Okay, all right, okay, that's what I wanted to clarify, okay.
Uh, okay, Mr. Brudy?
Oh, I'm good.
Come answer it.
Uh, are we allowed to attend any of these or?
Yes, they'll be public meetings.
Okay.
Uh, probably up in, uh, the upstairs conference room.
Does it mean kinda like, kinda like the subcommittee?
Yes, it's like that.
All right.
All right. I'll lengthen the discussion except to say as I look over their plan for data gathering, uh, for involving citizens and then for communicating with the city, um, yeah, I think it's excellent. So do I hear a motion in regard to six B?
I move that we accept, uh, professional service agreement with Kimberly Horn to update the City of Curville zoning ordinance, zoning map, subdivision ordinance, and key de- key development standards.
Okay. All right, Ian, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion second. All in favor of six B, let it be known by the raised hand. We're five oh, okay. Uh, six C administrative services contract. Ms. Brown?
Administrative services contract between City of Curville, Texas and City of Curville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, I won't belabor this point. This is an administrative services contract, uh, for a one-year period of time. Uh, this was for the budget amount that was approved both in the city council's budget as well as the EIC's budget. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, any questions of Mr. Hoppe? All right, do I hear a motion?
I'll move that we accept the administrative services contract between the City of Curville and, uh, City of Curville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation.
All right, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion, second. All in favor, raised hand. Okay, good, it it carries unanimously. Six D.
Six D is the City of Curville funding agreement and with Cur Economic Development Corporation.
All right.
Again, this is a one-year annual agreement, uh, for the partnership in economic development that the City of Curville has with the KEDC. Uh, this is for your, uh, budget amount approved within your fiscal year 19 budget. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So it's just, and forgive me, I didn't read it all this time. Um, it's just completely just a one-year agreement, it's not like it used to be.
Um, this one has always been a one-year agreement. The, uh, KEDC, EIC was a three-year agreement.
Okay.
So this is just the city KEDC when it's an annual.
Okay.
All right. Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll move that we accept the City of Curville funding agreement with the Cur Economic Development Corporation as presented.
I'll second it.
Give a second.
So I have other questions.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
I'll second it.
Eichner and and Segerman, okay, Mr. Brudy?
Yeah, okay. So this, um, this doesn't have any benchmark clawbacks or, I mean, specific ones, um, established in the agreement, I assume, right? Um, I think I saw that part. Um, so, um, there's no modification of the original business plan, right? It's just the same business plan that we had.
This is the business plan as presented to you earlier this summer.
And, um, the KEDC budget for FY 2019 still contemplates an increase in, well, I'm saying increase in spending. When it's holding that reserve, that reserve is possible spending, right, of nearly 25% over the prior year. Um, and all of this is in light of the fact KEDC has been, I don't know, you could, you could argue the the word used here, but I'd say underperforming, um, its stakeholders throughout 2017 and 2018. I'm not a, I'm not a big fan of issuing sort of blank checks backed by public funds and that's what it feels like this is doing, um, without those precise benchmarks that we're saying. We've talked about categories, but we haven't actually established any benchmarks. Um, and so, you know, for all the reasons that I just said, I don't think I can support, um, the funding agreement as presented. Uh, my original recommendations, you know, that I made in August, um, I still stand by those, which is, you know, create a true set of, uh, benchmarks to be held accountable and and to, uh, and then come back to us asking for the funding at that point. That would be, you know, my feeling.
So, Mr. Mayor.
He has brought that up before and I think Mr. Koenig is prepared to address that.
All right, okay.
Yeah, good evening. Um, let me present, it's all the way back in August, man, the time does go by fast. The concern about specific benchmark was raised and I I concur, I'm a I'm a metrics guy, I'm a business guy. And we've talked a lot about this in the interim. Uh, this year is really a rebuilding year. Uh, we are disappointed in the performance, uh, over the last year, but we have to understand we've not had any staff. We've had limited spend, I mean, there's a lot of reasons for that. And we wanna remediate those and we wanna make it better. This year is about investment, okay? This year is our time to invest in those projects, which will bring us benchmarkable results in the following year. Because there's a lag time, takes time to get the projects going, takes time to get those, uh, results, uh, coming in. So this year, what we're gonna see, we have three main objection, uh, objectives this year. First of all, uh, we want to rebuild the team, constitute the new board. Um, as you recall from the business plan, we'll be adding one more board member from the city and one more board member from the county. We've now done the necessary adjustments to our articles of incorporation to include those board adjustments, which we think will be a nice addition and a good way to go forward with respect to the integration of our board. Lead generation is gonna be what we're all about. Oh, let me just say before, uh, bringing on the new, and I I termed excellent VP CEO as being a key person to really help us drive this forward is well underway. We've gone through an initial process of screening and we're down to three really excellent candidates. Those candidates will be finally vetted and finally brought on board in the October three and four timeframe. We'll be bringing them to town and we'll be doing a full vetting of them. You all are, by the way, invited to a reception where you can meet them yourselves on a, on the evening of October 4th. You'll receive, if you haven't already, a formal invitation to that end. So with the team in place, then we're gonna start building the pipeline. Uh, I'm saying that under lead generation, we're gonna define 10 qualified leads this year, 10 qualified leads this year. Now, it will span the various opportunities as the market offers around the business plan complexion that we've already talked about many times before. So 10 qualified leads and as far as the utilization of 4B funding, which I think is the way we talk about how we do investment, we've got a nice corpus of cash and we've got a regular income coming in. But how are we putting that to work? How are we making those investments? And how are we ensuring that in year two, we're starting to reap those rewards? We gotta make those investments. So 10 qualified leads and I'm saying in terms of utilization of 3B funding, we'll, we'll spend $3 million in investments within the next year. And so those three objectives, once they're met, will feed the following years, which we'll define in more detail as we see these opportunities come in. We'll continue to look at utilization of 4B funding. We'll look at projects completed, jobs announced, payrolls announced, capital investment announced, average wage, lead generation. Again, it's important for the following year to continue to do that and return on investment eventually as we get these data in and we can actually look at those. So the metrics will grow as the business grows, as our performance track record is lengthened. That's how I propose to move forward.
Okay, well, I, um, I appreciate that. And while those are good, um, starting points, um, it still doesn't make me feel, and it's not your job to make me feel better, right? But, um, the, I had actually heard from some people that suggested that maybe creating the benchmarks after you've hired your, whatever we're calling the person VP.
VP.
Okay, um, might be prudent and I I'd be okay with that. Um, you have a reserve that's pretty substantial right now. I'd still would prefer to see, um, KEDC hold themselves accountable upfront, um, to some, you know, legitimate benchmarks, um, similar to how EIC does when it doles out money to prospective business. There's clawbacks and benchmarks in there. I, you know, I just would like to see that, um, better, I mean, more clearly defined before we actually commit.
Ten leads, $3 million used now, that's, that's, those are my benchmarks.
I I get it.
Okay, all right. Okay, do we have, do we have a motion on six D?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
That we approve the funding agreement with Cur Economic Development Corporation for an amount up to 24,500 for fiscal year 2019.
Okay.
I'll second.
Good, motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, let it be known by the raised hand and all opposed by the raised hand.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and make it yes, but.
Okay.
But with the understanding that this is, uh, you know, we get a better benchmark soon.
Okay, all right. Uh, six E?
Six E is approval of an economic development grant agreement between Cur Economic Development Corporation and the City of Curville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation.
Before you tonight, Mayor and Council, uh, this is approval of the, uh, economic development grant agreement that has been already previously approved by the, uh, EIC. Uh, it's their grant agreement for economic development partnership that they have with KEDC. Uh, this was the amount, this is a one-year contract as opposed to the three-year contract that they had previously had in three prior fiscal years. Uh, this shifts it to a one-year agreement per the business plan, uh, that, uh, Mr. Koenig elaborated on, uh, on the previous item. Uh, and this has the budget amount that was approved by this council and by the EIC for the EIC for fiscal year 19. We have to answer your questions you may have.
Okay, have any questions on that, on that one? Six E?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Ms. Segerman?
Uh, I make a motion that we approve the economic development grant agreement.
All right. Mr. Voper, you want to second that?
Sure, I'll second it.
All right, okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, same, all the same points apply here.
Okay, all right. All in favor of six E, if you'd let it be known by the raised hand?
Not really in favor.
Come on, George.
Well, you know, you know why, I'm just like, give you a five oh, right?
Okay. Okay, information and discussion, financial update. Ms. Dozier has got about an hour of presentation.
I have a brief presentation for you. Um, you have in your packet, um, the agenda bill and some financial, um, information and graphs. So I'm just gonna hit a few highlights. Um, this is the financial update for the month ended August 31st. Um, on the general fund side, through the end of August, we had revenues of 25.2 million compared to expenditures of 23.9 million. Um, a few notable, um, items are sales tax, which we've been talking about, um, for a while now. Um, we, our sales tax was up, um, 5.48% um, in August 2018 compared to August 2017. Um, we saw increases in the retail and manufacturing categories, which are two of our largest and most important categories, so that was good to see. Um, we have already received our September sales tax and I know Mr. McDaniel's giving you a little bit of an update on that. Um, so after receiving the September sales tax, it looks like we're gonna end the year about $76,000 under budget for the year, um, which is better than, um, what we had, you know, what worst-case scenario kind of thing was.
But but just to be clear, and you say it in the agenda bill, we actually have one more adjustment coming to that.
Yes, that is correct and that's, yeah, that's the part I was about to get to. So, um, we have to do some year-end adjustments for financial reporting purposes. We have to see what our actual sales tax received in October and November is and adjust some of that back into the current year. So I don't know what those adjustments are gonna be yet, so that could, um, impact the number slightly, but I wanted to tell you where we stand as of right now.
Would it be out of line to think that it might be in the neighborhood of $20,000?
That's, it, it was in the neighborhood of $20,000 last year. Um, so we'll see what it is this year. Um, and then on the property tax side, um, we're right on track there. Um, it looks like we're gonna end just slightly better than budget. So those are our two largest revenue categories. Um, our expenditures, um, are still lower than budget primarily due to some staffing vacancies, which we've discussed before. Um, we have filled multiple positions recently, including in my department, which I'm happy about. Um, and, um, but, uh, so we'll see some of those staffing numbers coming up, but we still think we'll end the year under budget on the expenditure side. Um, on the water and sewer fund, through the end of August, we had revenues of 11.5 million compared to expenditures of 10.5 million. Um, on the water sales side, uh, we continued to see water sales that were higher than budget due to, um, the dry conditions primarily and then also to, um, reuse customers that were on reuse a little longer than we had budgeted. We expect, um, that to turn around some in the month of September, although I did see my neighbors watering this week, but, um, uh, and then on the sewer side, um, we continue to come in under budget on the sewer side. I was hoping those numbers would offset, but, um, given the rainy September, it looks like, um, the, the water sales aren't gonna quite compensate for what we're seeing on the sewer side with, um, with a little bit lower than average, um, consumption there. Um, on the other revenue side in the water and sewer fund, this is something that y'all have seen for a while now, but we did have a, uh, unusual transfer related to the December 2017 debt refinancing. So those are the highlights and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
One other item I wanna mention is that with all this rain, which has been wonderful, uh, we also have, um, decreased activity at the golf course, so we're probably not gonna beat the numbers that you saw during the budget process. Uh, but I think we, the plan that we have to move ahead with, with next year's budget's gonna be adequate for what, with what we need.
And so taking away the, uh, the transfer, 'cause that's sort of, you know, one-shot deal.
Correct.
The water fund through August is 600,000 in the black? Is that what we're saying? Is that what we're saying?
Through the end of August, it's a nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
Right, that, but you would take away four hundred thousand, that's what I'm saying, so.
Yes, okay.
Through September, are we expecting a change in that? Is there a big expense that's gonna hit us, or is it just kind of, are we gonna be that far ahead?
We are gonna see sewer continue to come in lower than budget in September, so that's gonna decrease that number some. And it does not look like water sale, water sales could come in below budget for September, so that will change the revenue side of things. On the expenditure side, we have had some repairs, you know, it's, it's not just a completely one-twelfth kind of thing on the expenditure side. So, that's as much as I can comment on the September activity.
Alright, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a board appointment, as you read.
Appointment of an alternate to the Curville Youth Advisory Committee. There, you, you all appointed the fifteen members, and then we had an application for an alternate position. And that is the application that is with the memo that you were emailed, and it is up to you.
Okay, so, Daphne Dozier is, we have one, we have one place, and we have one applicant.
Correct.
And so, is, is this person kin to you, Ms. Dozier?
Yes, sir, she is.
And she's how old?
She is fourteen.
Fourteen, okay, alright. And Kim Meismer, by the way, from the staff, will be working with this, with this group.
I'd like to make a note of the fact that Kim Meismer will be a good addition to this. However, I'd also like to say that their staff here, it's nine twenty-three, I don't see Ms. Meismer here at all. I'd just like to. Oh, okay, then she's off the hook.
She is upstairs?
Alright, good deal.
Oh, okay. She put in her time.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Do I hear a motion that we appoint Daphne Dozier to the Curville Youth Advisory Committee?
I still move.
Alright, Mr. Do, Mr. Broody, you want to second that?
Sure, I'll second that.
Alright, good, good. Okay, we got a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise that.
There's Kim, look, look. She's apparently watching, I guess.
Now you know. She, she'll be there incognito.
Okay.
Were you cussing the whole way down?
Okay.
All in favor?
We, I'm sorry.
Oh, I didn't raise my hand. Oh, okay, well.
All in favor of Daphne Dozier, okay? Okay, we got it, okay.
I forgot to raise my hand, I'm sorry.
Okay, we are going to have the city managers' report, and then I would suggest that we just stay as long as anybody else wants to come to the podium and share thoughts.
Have breakfast?
Alright, okay.
Okay, so, coming around is the monthly CIP project status report. I wanna highlight just four items on this one. First of all, item number two, Singing Wind Drive reconstruction. People have been very patient about this, I think there's been great coordination around the school. We, we still anticipate completing this project in October, weather permitting. Item eight, River Trail West, also, we anticipate completing that project in October. No, that's okay, I wanna make sure you guys have that.
Okay.
And then, number nine, Curville Sports Complex. A number of items here mentioned over in the comments column. Biggest change here is the fertigation equipment installation and building is complete. And then, we're also continuing to work that prioritized list from, as recommended by the park board and approved by the council. And then sixteen, this project is important to the completion of item fifteen, so we expect a progress report on that third-party review of the granular carbon-activated system with regard to the mitigation of TTHM, so that, that'll be coming to you pretty quickly. So, October will be a busy month with ribbon cuttings, with completion of some projects, with some report, report-outs, and you can see from your future agenda listing that we've got a lot of items slated for October as well, so.
My call is, do we have fewer than that?
But we could increase our sales tax and buy some new outfits for those ribbon cuttings, I'm just saying.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
More items on the agenda.
Hang on, don't, don't gabble it up.
Alright.
I got a couple of future agenda items.
Okay, go, future agenda items.
One is, just confirm, create a policy of the video recordings of meetings, as far as, I don't know that we got a resolution stating it, but something about how long we're gonna keep them. And then, I know we've looked at it, but as part of that same thing, tell us what the cost of a searchable video would be, I know it's like enormous, I just wanna know what that number was. I think they, I think Granicus gave us a, a bit on it. And then, the other future agenda item is to look at creating a policy whereby contracts are not awarded or negotiated, and taxpayer money is not granted to developers who have been convicted of or are under investigation for felony crime. So, that's just a, those are the future agenda considerations.
I have a couple, Mayor.
Oh, okay.
Maybe have a workshop on streets to talk with Mark about this. I know that EA has been on the future agenda list, talk specifically about chip seal, the pros and cons. And then, the other one would be also have a workshop about a music festival, and I'd like to maybe bring somebody to explain to us about that process. Maybe I can work with you, Mark, on that.
Okay. Nine twenty-eight, we are adjourned.